Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. My name is Dan Hillmer. I'm serving as mayor this year for the city council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the roll call. Allison, would you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Hara.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Here.
Mayor Hillmer.
Here. Councilmember Scott Candell is absent this evening. If you're able, would you please rise and join us in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Drifted there. Next item on this evening's agenda is public comment. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding items that are not on this evening's agenda?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members in Zoom or in person. Our first comment will come from caller ending 1402.
Welcome.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I don't know if the council members noted it, but I personally think that the council got a bit of a bad rap in a Chronicle article by Peter Hartlob about a week ago in which Mr. Hartlob, he's discussing Bay Area transit agencies and their lack of connectivity and he mentions the, what he calls the mind-boggling or mind-bending connection between Smart and the ferry. And then he goes on to say, "Plans for a terminal much closer to the ferry were killed by Larkspur City Council in part because of worry it might impact views." That's not my recollection, and when I was on the Smart Station Area CAC, well, 10 years ago, 12 to 14, the, what we were told was that Smart had settled on a location on its right-of-way, which it owned for cost considerations. So it does seem to me that the city council may be unfairly blamed. I remember the CAC was consistently concerned about the lack of connectivity and now 10 years later, the news media is discussing it. But in any event, I, I don't know if the council or I should respond to this. My own person who has emails for me is indisposed, but in any event, I did think the council got a bad rap for something that is being criticized. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comment on items not on the agenda this evening?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands in Zoom or in person. There's no further public comment.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Are there members of the council that would like to ask questions or remove items for further discussion from the consent calendar? Seeing none, are there members of the public that would like to ask questions regarding items on the consent calendar? Yes, sir. Would you please come to the microphone? Would you identify the item?
Yes, the item is 4.4, the consent calendar.
Okay, we will remove that for the moment. And we'll take that up as a separate item in a moment after I ask the council if they would like to consider the balance of the consent calendar.
I see, and then I'll be able to comment.
Yes, it'll just be a second. Are there other members of the public that would like to remove items for questions or further discussion from the consent calendar?
Looking for any additional raised hands. There's no further comments.
Okay, I would like to bring the balance of the consent calendar minus item 4.4 back to the council for consideration of a motion to adopt.
I'll move adoption of 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.5.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Allison, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hara.
Yeah.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer.
Yes, thank you very much. Now we will take up item 4.4. This is consideration of adoption of Resolution 74/22, awarding a construction contract to Majoria and Gelati Incorporated for the Measure B Group 4 Pavement Rehabilitation Project, which is capital improvement project number 22-301. Can we have a brief staff report, please?
Yes, good evening. Julian Skinner, Public Works Director for the City of Larkspur. As you mentioned, the item before you tonight is consideration of awarding a construction contract for Measure B pavement project group four. This is the last major paving project of our five-year paving program. It proposes to pave streets, including South Alisio, Monte Vista, Baltimore, and other streets in those neighborhoods, about three miles of streets or so. On August 3rd of this year, you approved the plans and specifications for this project and authorized us to do a public bid advertisement. We did the public bid advertisement. We received six bids in response, opened them publicly, and the bid of Majora and Gelati was determined to be the low bidder at $4,144,145,145. So we conducted a bid review and it's staff's recommendation that you move forward and award a contract to Majora and Gelati for this contract.
Are there city council members that would like to ask questions regarding this agenda item of staff? All right. Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Please come back to the microphone. Could you state your name and tell us where you live?
Evening, council members. My name is Andrew Kingsdale, and I live on the south side of South Alisio Drive, right behind Bonner Shopping Center.
Welcome.
Thank you. So my two children attend Basich Elementary, and so we bike along South Alisio Drive constantly, often several times a day, going to and from school to the park downtown Larkspur. Sometimes the kids are on the back of our electric bike. Sometimes they're biking on their own. It's a designated safe route to school, so I see lots of other children and families biking along that road all the time, as well as people commuting to and from the Larkspur Ferry. Speaking for myself and my family, biking on South Alisio makes us very nervous because the bikes and the cars have to share the same road. So we regularly deal with cars pulling, you know, creeping up behind us, looking for an opportunity to accelerate around us, oftentimes having to swerve into the oncoming traffic coming the other way. We often see cars pulling in and out of driveways and, you know, not necessarily noticing myself or my smaller children, much smaller children. And so I'm not here to blame drivers at all, you know. I've been guilty of rushing to a doctor's appointment before. But the fact is that South Alisio Drive is the fifth highest, most dangerous crash corridor in Larkspur, and it's simply not safe for biking. The obvious solution here is to convert a parking lane along one side of that road into a Class 4 or Class 2 bike lane. Bike lanes are proven to reduce bike car collisions. I know they would bring, it would bring my family great peace of mind. I would love for my kids to be able to bike to school safely. But this Measure B repaving plan for South Alisio is simply going to perpetuate the same dangerous road design, and we think that would be a huge mistake and a lost opportunity. Now, I understand that there are objections and counterarguments to hitting pause on South Alisio, and I'm only talking about South Alisio, not any of the other streets, so I just want to quickly address some of them. When there was a, the city held public meetings about redesigning South Alisio back in 2019, the loss of street-side parking was one of the major concerns, major objections to the bike lanes. And I understand that, and I think that's a legitimate concern, but I do think that also that there's room here for compromise. You know, we're not asking to take away all street-side parking. We just think it should be along one side of the road. And I think it bears noting that every single building along that road has its own designated parking lot. And if you go down there, which I do all the time, I think you'll notice that there is consistently as many vacant or empty available parking spaces on that road as there are filled ones. So I think we can work together here and find the right mix of parking availability and bike safety. The other major objection that I've heard or consideration that I've heard as well, you know, kids can just bike on the sidewalk. They don't feel safe. Well, my kids actually do do that, and it doesn't make me feel much safer because there are all kinds of obstacles on sidewalks. There's trees, there's uneven roads, and those are the obstacles that actually make it harder for drivers to see little kids pulling, when they're pulling in and out of driveways. So I don't think that's a really safe alternative for my kids. And then finally, I'd just say, you know, I've heard that I'm just simply too late to the game here, you know, that the, the city has already done community outreach back in 2019, and it would be too expensive and time-consuming to try to change that plan now. And maybe that's true, but I just want to point out two things. The first is that, you know, I think if you look at the 2019 study, which I think I forwarded to you, and I have copies if you'd like, there was a multi trans-road study that was conducted and proving how to improve South Alisio. There was actually a lot, a tremendous amount of support for biking safety in that, when they did outreach among the community. A lot of the comments were in favor of it. And the other thing is that I think things have actually changed to make it more dangerous since 2019. So right now, I don't know if you've been down there recently, but they've added these, these islands often in the middle to help with the crossways. And what that does is it actually forces cars and bikes into a narrower roadway so that it's even closer, you have to ride even closer to the cars than you used to before. There's more e-bikes now on the roads, so bikes are going faster. And, you know, let's be honest, once this road is repaved, the cars are probably going to be going faster, too. So again, I'm not here to blame bikers or drivers. I'm just trying to state what I think of the facts, which is that the biking conditions on South Alisio have only gotten more dangerous. So summarize, you know, I'm not here to make anybody's life more difficult. I'm just asking the city to maybe hit pause on this one street. I have no objections to repaving any of the other 23 roads that are in this contract bid. What are our priorities as a community? Is it to protect convenient parking, or is it to help protect children who are on designated safe routes to school and commuters who are going to and from the Larkspur Ferry? I think the city has an opportunity to prevent further bike accidents on one of the highest-risk corridors and to save money, actually, in the long run, by getting this road done right while the repaving is happening. Thank you very much for your time. I do have some testimonials from other people, members of the community.
You can leave him with the city clerk. She'll make sure again. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments on this agenda item? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tom Duzenberry. I live at 965 Magnolia. And I'm actually the crossing guard at South Alisio and Bonner. And I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Kingsdale stated just regarding the volume of traffic, especially in the morning when at the height of the commute hour, these kids on bicycles and pedestrians coming from three different directions at the same time, trying to coordinate that and get everybody safely out of traffic and across the street. I think having a bike lane there would be a huge advantage and a safety factor for those children coming to school every day. We've had a lot of close calls. I've been working there since January of this year, and once the bridge was finished, it's a beautiful bridge and very happy to be working there with the controlled traffic controls and so forth. But I've noticed there's a lot of speeding going on, especially coming across the bridge. And I think if it's possible to get a bike lane in, it would, it would definitely be a great help for the community and for the children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions regarding this agenda item? Is there anybody in the queue, Allison?
Going to call on Kimberly Sabreros.
Hi, Kimberly.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here. My name is Kimberly, and we live just off of South Alisio. I as well have two children who attend Basich, and that is our commute. We started the school year off very excited to ride to school, and my girls, just like Andrew said, are very, very nervous on that road. And to reiterate about the islands, if anything, those islands have to be removed. It's causing so much, it's way too many close calls where it is a very narrow space where these cars are deciding in the last moment to pass us and even go into the other side of the road. They go around the island and drive on the opposite direction. I'm on that road on my bike four to six times a day for both pickups, and I'm seeing so, so many, so much bad driving, and I know we can't change the drivers, but we need to make it safer for these kids, for the adults, too, but mainly kids. I have a five and eight-year-old, and I, I guess, I hope we're not too late. I just heard Andrew say that, that the, if anything, can we pause it? Can we keep talking and make better decisions for our kids and our safety because it is very unsafe on that road? Thank you so much for considering and for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And there's no further public comment.
All right, thank you. That concludes public comment. We'll bring it back to the city council for consideration. Are there, I have a question of staff. Julian, can you describe the kind of boundaries around which this, the timing of the decision tonight and room for any tweaking?
Yeah, so specific to the item that's before you tonight, it's consideration of awarding a construction contract. And per the public contract code, your options are to award or not to award. You don't have the option of awarding partial project. You either have to take action to award the contract as it was advertised or to reject all of the bids and then potentially redesign and re-advertise. If you are interested in relooking at South Alisio, you could direct us to award the contract as it is, and then after contract award, we could have discussions about South Alisio. But any discussions we have from this point about South Alisio moving forward are going to delay the paving of that street by at least a year. We've seen our paving costs go up about 20% since when we started Measure B. We were saving some good money on the first few years, and this bid was the first time we came in above what we had planned for the project. There's two reasons for that. One is asphalt and labor is getting more expensive. The other is the longer we leave these streets, the worst case they get in, and we're having to do more maintenance to them. So I couldn't put an exact dollar figure on it, but the contract is for over $4 million. About $900,000 of that is for South Alisio. If we were to defer this and it were to go out as its own project, it would also incur additional costs because it's a standalone project and it's lesser quantities. And so you'd be looking at 1.2 to 1.5 million to do the same project that we can do today for 900,000.
Is there any room within the contract after it's awarded to look at it, at some of the value-added propositions we heard tonight?
There is room within the contract. I don't believe there is room to undertake the public process that we would be comfortable with, that would be associated with removing 75 parking spaces from the street. We went through a pretty rigorous bike and ped master plan back in 2016, 2017, where we looked at citywide, all the bicycle and pedestrian improvements. We refer to that document with every single project that we do to see if there's something in there that can be implemented with our paving project or any other project. And so as we knew, we had South Alisio coming up. It was identified in the bike and ped master plan as a special corridor, meaning that during the course of the bike and ped master plan, there was not consensus on what a bike facility should look like on South Alisio. So you'll see some streets in the bike and ped master plan, they say this should have a Class 1, this should have a Class 2, this should have a Class 4, or there's no real improvement you can make on the street. But for South Alisio, it was singled out as a street that needed more study. So in 2019, as we knew, we would be paving South Alisio. We undertook a public process to engage the neighborhood and find out what would folks be comfortable with on South Alisio. We held an introductory workshop where we threw out all of the options for what the street could potentially look like, all the different treatments. We had over 20 people at that workshop, and it was probably about two-thirds of the participants were from the biking community and about a third were residents of South Alisio. And so we heard some similar arguments to what you heard, or statements of what you heard from the public tonight is that there's folks out there that definitely wanted to see some improvements. And then we also heard from the South Alisio folks that they wanted to do something to address the speeding cars. They wanted to do something to address the walking condition, the crosswalks and such, but they were opposed to any mass loss of parking. So we did hear a lot of feedback at that first meeting, and then we worked with our consultant. We came back with a proposal at a second meeting that was an interim project to address the primary concerns that we heard, which was bike versus vehicle collisions. And when we looked at the collision data, most, if not all of these collisions, were cars making left turns at intersections at too fast of a rate of speed, hitting a car coming the other direction. So that's why we installed the splitter islands. They're intended to slow cars down as they make left turns to reduce the potential of those collisions with cars. And then we also implemented the crosswalks at that time.
Councilmember questions? Councilmember Hara or Councilmember Way, would you like to start?
Thank you for that, Julian. I drive on that street often because it's a way that I can get from downtown to where, where I live. And it is true, those islands are inconvenient in some respects for drivers in particular. But I understand why they're there. They're there to basically slow traffic down and, particularly as folks are entering intersections where there's actually a real risk to pedestrians and to bicycle riders that may be coming in the other directions. So I don't, I don't have a problem, even though I understand they, they may feel inconvenient to people in some respects. I guess the question is, is there anything that we can do, maybe in terms of signage or some, some kind of mitigations to make people really understand that they're about to come to an area where those islands exist? Because they may not, they may not really be used to them at this point, having driven down that road for years and they haven't been there. Something that would provide some additional mitigation without adding to the pavement cost or anything of that sort.
Yeah, so we've actually already identified a couple of improvements we can make at those islands with the striping. Those were a retrofit, so they were basically put in place, and the existing striping kind of works around them. But now that we're repaving the street, we actually think there's an improvement we can make with the striping, and there's also some additional signage that we're planning on putting on the nose of each of those islands. We started out with something low-key because we didn't want to have sign pollution, but we have seen a couple of black tire scuff marks on the corners of islands, so we're going to take those signs up to the next level without getting huge signs. So yeah, we'll be making incremental updates and adapting the striping based on some of the feedback that we've got from, from folks using the corridor.
Yeah, that, that, that's encouraging, and I'd be interested to see what you come up with there. I think it's important for the public to understand that those islands are there to slow down traffic, and that is a benefit not only to drivers but to pedestrians and to bicycle riders, and improves the safety of that corridor immensely, even though it's kind of a pain in the neck to get around them. But that's just, that's just the way it is. That was, that's the reason that they're there is to improve the safety of that, that street. And I think it's actually accomplished that, that goal. I know I slow down when I drive through there, when I take a look at them and see them coming up. Thank you.
So, so Julian, that, South Alisio is a very complicated street. There's a lot of driveways. There's a lot of single multifamily homes. It's narrow. It has a steep hill. So currently, and I rode my bike over there the other day. I met Mr. Kingsdale there. There are certain sections where the bicycle and the vehicles are in the same lane together. The Parisi study that I looked at, that's the, the improvements that are coming up in the repaving program actually has a designated bike lane. Is that what it has? Or will there still be sections where cars and vehicles, bikes and vehicles are in the same space?
Yeah, so if you're referring to the study, the documents that we published for the last public meeting, there was the proposal that Parisi had back in 2019 that we implemented before with the splitter islands. That has what's called a Class 3 bike facility. That means the bike and the car share the same lane. So it's a 12-foot wide lane for the most part, and then a vehicle passing a bike is supposed to give three foot of space when they pass a bike. So that's the theory behind the bike share. The issue we had with this corridor was there are a number of other alternatives that would be an improvement on the bike facility, but they all require a removal of parking, and they each have their own issues, and there wasn't consensus from the cycling community on what that improvement should look like. I think you heard the gentleman mention safe routes to schools. While bike lanes, simply striping a place for bikes on the street is typically not a safe route to school improvement. We have bike lanes out on Doorty. The kids ride their bikes on the path and on the sidewalks. School-age kids typically do not ride bikes in painted bike lanes on the street. That's when, that's called a Class 2 bike lane when it's painted on the street. The next higher class is either a Class 1 or a Class 4. That's a separate facility. And that's, a couple of the sketches in Parisi's document showed those, but they were options for what the street could be in the future. And again, there are lots of complicating factors. There's, well, beyond just the removal of parking, there's what should that bike facility look like? And it's, it depends on who the, who the user is. You know, the, the school-age kids would probably prefer a 12-foot wide sidewalk like we have on Doorty out there so that they could have that as their bicycling experience. Whereas the commuters that want to zip through that corridor, they'd rather have the Class 2 bike lanes on the street. So, you know, it's, 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 it's to, to get to a point where we make more bike improvements, there's A, there's a parking issue we have to understand, and then B, there's, we still don't understand what that bike facility should be, and we would need more community engagement. There's a big price difference between striping bike lanes and putting in a 12-foot sidewalk that would be a, you know, a true safe routes to school improvement.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Thank you. Yeah, Julian, I had a couple of questions. One is just the timing. So I think I actually was at the 2019 meetings, and, you know, given how much things have changed in all patterns of commuting and, and working, and, you know, I'm wondering if there's a way to get current information, you know, to see, A, if there's more of a consensus with the stakeholders, and B, if, you know, the studies that were done then, that, you know, Councilmember Way was talking about, maybe some things have changed. Is, is that something that's difficult or even possible or?
It's not difficult. It's just a process that will take time, and if there was a desire to revisit South Alisio, as I said, you would have the option of, you could pave the street now and then look at what would the next step of South Alisio be? If you decided to do something different, if we got a grant to build wide sidewalks or something like that, and you ended up having to restripe the street, well, there's no harm in repaving the street now. You'd basically be throwing away the cost of whatever striping you put down now that doesn't work with whatever bike or pedestrian improvement you come up with after that public process. Alternately, you could choose not to repave the street now and have that conversation and then cut back and pave the street and do the bike. Um, and have that conversation and then cut back and pave the street and do the bike improvement all at the same time. But that would. Presume you were able to find the money to do the, you know, the bike project. Um, also at that time and the street doesn't get too bad in in that interim.
Just just a couple of follow up questions. So I'm sorry, the current um, plan is for which class? Um, any class of of a bike lane?
Yeah, so the current plan for paving South Aliso is to put it back to the existing condition, which is a class three bicycle facility.
Okay.
Uh, which means you have a shared lane with vehicles and cars. They use the same um, lane. Uh, and then it gets designated as a uh, class three by putting what are called sharos down on the pavement that remind a driver that they're to share the road. Um, with a cyclist.
And then a a class two or one would be substantial cost. You'd have to tear stuff up again if you're going to go and try to retrofit.
So a class two would be basically the cost of of striping. So. Um, it would be on a project that size, that much paving, it would be about a hundred thousand dollar throwaway. Um, if you decided to come back and do class two striping later on, your curb stay in the same place. Um, you lose parking on one side and you shift all the the stripes over and you end up with a five foot bike lane designated. Uh, for cyclists only on each side of the the travel lane. Once you start getting into a class one or a class four, then you're getting into the. One, two, two and a half million dollars, depending on what that facility looks like. And um, again, there's a. There's a lot of driveways and a lot of intersections uh, to be dealt with. So it would be, um, it would take a lot of um, engineering and a lot of study to. To figure out how to adapt a class one or a or a class four um, to that corridor.
And sorry, just one more thing and just in the contract. Um, so it's, you know, you've already gone and. Gotten bids, so you can't say it's been awarded and now we change it. But you know, how does a contract modification or? You know, a sort of an add on or follow on work here or a subcontract? I mean, is there a way to keep all the work you've done? And if the information and the consensus were there to do, you know, uh, more expensive, you know, uh, type of. Pedestrian bike sidewalk, you know, you could still fit it in legally and contractually.
Um, so if we were to make a significant change on South Aliso, if we awarded the contract as is now. Uh, went through a process and somehow the contractor wasn't finished and we were able to have that scope available. We would not be able to add it. Uh, because technically it wasn't part of the bid po- uh, package that was publicly bid and it's significant of enough work that it would have to go through its own. Uh, public bid process.
Okay.
And I just want to be clear that um, the the way that we bid the project. Um, if if there was interest in not paving South Aliso, that is direction you can give me that I have to come back with. Um, I can't, you can't, we can't modify a bid award to not include South Aliso. So technically you would have to. Award the project and then separately give me direction to come back with an item to change the project scope. To delete South Aliso and then we would work with the contractor on his compensation from removing. Um, that portion of uh, work from the project. Uh, but you couldn't do that all in one in an action tonight. You either have to award. As it was advertised um, or reject the bids.
Thank you. Um, I have, I have one or two questions. I'll try to make it one. That the uh, the reference to the Parisi studies earlier that you characterized as. Um, what it might be able to be in the future. Was that a class one that was illustrated?
Um, Parisi showed four options for a future facility. He showed a class one, two. And two different versions of a class four, I believe. So he showed options.
Would would the paving as contracted or as proposed to be contracted, would that? Um, be a significant. Uh, departure from the scope to. Kind of end uh, determine that the future is closer than we think and we should be looking at that, those alternatives now.
No, I would say that's um, it's probably incremental. I mean, what you would be looking at doing if you landed on a. Class four or a class one in the future basically means you're going to take one of those sidewalks and make it wider or you're going to add a bike way to it. And you would do that over top of a part of the street that you're paving right now.
So the the project, we could award the project and not. Cut off the opportunity to do that.
Correct. And that's the same approach when we took uh, when we installed those splitter islands, knowing that if the road shifts in the future. We didn't dig down and build those splitter islands with a foundation like you typically could. We built them on top of the existing asphalt so that. In the future, if it was determined we needed a class one, two, or a four and the lanes had to shift, they would be easy to remove uh, with an ultimate design down the road.
Thank you. All right, other, are there uh, other discussions?
Now I.
Mister City Manager.
Um, yes, sir. I do want to weigh in here for the council that you heard Julian tell you. The design of South Aliso was done as part of a much larger policy evaluation for the entire city. And I think to suggest you're going to pull this one decision point out of. A larger citywide evaluation doesn't probably do the best by your broader policy document. I think if you're thinking of giving direction to Julian to continue to evaluate this situation. It probably needs to be in the context of the entire bike ped master plan and not singled out. We have limited dollars and resources and. We need to engage a variety of stakeholders to prioritize those investments. And while I realize that for the speakers, this is the highest priority investment. The city has to put it in the context of all of that plan and and prioritize those resources as best we can.
Uh, thank you, Mister City Manager. Um, I think, I think we're just looking to make sure that uh. Any flexibility. That would allow us to uh. Contemporize the project, I'll say, because things have changed over the last couple of years, I think would be helpful. Uh, Kevin Harrow.
Uh, no, I'd I'd be happy to um, move uh, adoption of the resolution when it's appropriate.
It's appropriate.
Um, so I will move resolution or adoption of resolution seventy four dash twenty two. Of the city council to award a construct, instruct that, a construction contract. Um, uh, for the measure B uh, pavement rehabilitation project on South Aliso.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second. Allison, please call the roll.
Council member Harrah.
Yes.
Council member Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Homer.
Yes, motion is passed. Resolution seventy four dash twenty two has been awarded. Uh, thank you for all the uh, thoughtful comments. Uh, we'll move to the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. First, I want to express my regrets for not being in the council chamber this evening. Um, I am in an isolation from a COVID exposure. Luckily, I I haven't tested positive yet myself, but. Um, it's a reminder that that's still with us and this hybrid environment is useful. As we navigate these last days of this uh, challenge. Um. With that said, I have two items I want to highlight. One is we continue to be in need of applicants for the park and recreation commission. And so I encourage the public. To consider uh, this is an opportunity to serve the community. Um, do a lot of interesting work reviewing the plans and ideas for our various public parks and. Um, if that's something that interests folks, they should definitely contact the city clerk for more information. And then secondly, I just want to remind folks, we're now entering the election season and so uh, mail in ballots will start to arrive and other information about how you can vote. And uh, we encourage folks to pay attention, be informed and participate in our upcoming elections. With that, Mister Mayor, turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mister City. Thank you, Mister City Manager. Uh, the next item are council members' oral reports and comments. We have any reports this evening? Council member Way.
I I just had two things I wanted to share with the my council members in the public. I I was lucky to take a tour of the new Vivilon. Um, housing and health and wellness center that is going in in San Rafael. Um, I was speaking to our. Community services director about how when we look at our hu- housing element that's coming forward. This is an example to me of um, really opportunities to find diversity of housing within our community. It's a six story building in and with three levels on the top, which will be um, section eight housing for seniors. Um, with a relationship with Eden Housing. Um, the second, the so from the bottom level is the Susan and Dennis Gilardi Health and Wellness Center. Which is a multidisciplinary center for food, uh, for recreation, for um, educational opportunities for the residents living there and members. Of the Vivilon community. And then in the bottom level, there's a clinic for um, Marin community clinics to serve a geriatric clinic. And I think it's a great model for us to continue to look at when we see our needs for housing. Um. The second is that our library is having a holiday card art contest. It's right here. And it's open to kids K through eight. And um, there's opportunities for kids to enter a contest as to why they love libraries. And I am um, on our library, new library um, and community center committee. And so I'm always um, wanting to share things that our library is doing to help raise awareness. About our need for a new library. This is uh, going to be going on all month of November and um, entries are accepted now through November first. Excuse me, all the month of October. That's all.
They won't accept entries from the city council.
Darn. Oh, you're disappointed.
Thank you very much. Uh, council member Haroff, do you have any reports this evening?
Uh, just two uh, briefly uh, related items. Um. One, I was very uh, uh, pleased to be invited to attend the uh, Cal CCA gala. At the old Hibernia Bank in downtown San Francisco on September twenty sixth. This is the, the, basically the trade association, group association representing. Um, uh, community choice aggregation entities like MCE Clean Energy, of which I'm uh, are on, which I am on the board. Uh, it was a great event. Uh, Tom Steyer was the keynote speaker. Um, interesting person to listen to. Um, but it was a great event and a great opportunity for members of the CCA community throughout the state to get together and. Um, and uh, uh, applaud the success of those organizations in uh, contributing to our California energy markets. Uh, on a related note, we at MCE had a uh, a retreat on the twenty ninth. Um, there was an online retreat. We did not get together, but it was on Zoom and we could all see each other um, remotely. It was an opportunity to meet uh, new port members from throughout uh, MCD's service area, which of course is now. Not just Marin, but it is Solano County, Napa and Contra Costa County. Uh, get an update on the financials, which are very good. Um, the gross revenue revenues for MCE Clean Energy and then and these are. Again, the gross revenue is not the net. The gross revenues are approximately half a billion dollars at this point. Uh, but most of that gets eaten up with expenses, particularly energy procurement expense. Um, and just for my own sake, I had an opportunity because I chair uh, MCE's audit committee. To provide a report to the board on the status of our financials for this year and the outcome of our most recent. Audit process. And I was pleased to report to uh, to the board and to you tonight. That once again, like we often, in fact, always do here at the city of Marin or city of uh, Larkspur. Um, we got a clean audit report and um, I think that is a great outcome for that organization. And that's it.
Vice Mayor Paulson, do you have any reports this evening?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I know a lot of us are here tonight to talk about housing, so I thought I'd. Report on something else, which is um, fire safety and earthquake safety. Uh, so I've been working with the um. Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency for a few years now and the neighborhood response groups and. I kind of feel like we we lucked out this year. You know, we dodged the bullet of of a really bad fire. It was a drought and you know, it's not over. The winds are still. Going to kick up and temperature doesn't change fire risk. Um, but I did want to say that on on the good news. Um, you know, this is our tax dollars and and I always want to come back to you, the public and say, you know, how are we doing? Uh, one of the key components of protecting homes is is what we call defensible space. So your house, even if you live far from the woods, could catch some embers. They fly for two, three miles and then get into your attic and burn the house down. So inspectors go around and the the current expectation was that we could. Get every house and then come back in three years. So that was the rate at which we were doing it. Imagine every home, and this is apartments and you know, all. You know, buildings at risk. And that pace is actually every two years now, so it's really sped up. And one of the big, big lessons is is, you know, and one of the challenges is compliance. So you can tell someone, hey, you need to put a screen. To keep the embers from coming into your attic and burning it down, but the person does nothing. And so you've got a couple of choices. You can give them a heavy fine. Or what what the MWPA has done is they've actually found that education. Reinspection and maybe the biggest hook is insurance is really changing the compliance. So if you tell people. You know, look at what you're going to lose your insurance, your insurance rates go up, that really gets, you know, behaviors to change. So you know, for me, I I feel like I I sleep easier at night. You know, we're building a ring of defensible, a fire break. And the evacuation routes and the public professionals are getting ready to clear us out should something happen. And the homes are being, you know, uh, more and more, you know, hardened and guarded against fire. So. So it feels like, you know, with all the challenges we have these days, I feel that's a silver lining and it's worth announcing. And just two minor public announcements on that note. So daylight savings time is November sixth. And that's the day where people um, all around Larkspur, Corte Madera, they they practice this neighborhood response group thing. So if there were an earthquake or a flood or a fire, you know, you want to have a drill, you know, when's our air raid drill, so to speak? And that's coming. So you know, stay tuned. It's on, it's going to be on our website and so forth. Or we, you know, there's other channels. And then also October twentieth. Is called the Great Shakeout. So ten twenty in the morning on ten twenty, the day. You're supposed to take one minute to think if the big shaker came, what would you do? And it's a good way to, you know, remind ourselves that we live with. Multiple risks, fire, floods, earthquakes, and we don't have to, you know. Have what happened in Florida happen to us if we stay on top of things. So so some, you know, good news, but really need to stay on top of it. And uh, I think that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Um, I I just have one uh, comment to make and it's regarding uh, the business item this evening. Um, you'll notice there there are only four of us here this evening. Council member Candell is absent. And in my, in my experience, um, I I know the item is described and there's a staff report with a a presentation. And at the end of the presentation, there's a slide that seems to ask the council uh, to make a decision. Um, I just want to say that uh, that this is a very uh, citywide uh, important decision. And I will just say for my experience, I have not never been at a council meeting where we have not had a full council for such an important. Decision. So if any of you um, are hoping that there's going to be an up or down sort of vote uh, tonight. I just want to say from my own personal experience, without a full council, um, it's likely not to be the case. So if uh, if if you're wanting to manage your time this evening, if you're worried about a long meeting. Uh, I just want to be uh, clear about my experience with such uh, important matters. So I will, we'll move forward, going to have a thoughtful discussion this evening. We're going to listen to everybody and we're going to have a full council discussion. But without council member Candell and I'm just speaking for myself, uh, I don't think we're going to have a full discussion. So uh, we'll, we'll move forward with the public hearing now, which is item seven point one. I'm going to open the public hearing. This is an introduction and a waving of the first reading of ordinance one zero six zero. Amending section nine point two four point zero seven zero of the Larksborough Municipal Code. To adopt fines for violation of the city's short term rental ordinance. May we please have a staff report?
Good evening, council. Staff is recommending that the council introduce an ordinance to adopt higher fines for violations of the city's ordinances prohibiting short term rental of residential units. The fines would be the maximum allowed under state law, which would increase the current fines from one hundred dollars for a first violation. To five hundred dollars for a third or additional violation within a year. It would increase to fifteen hundred dollars for a first violation and up to five thousand dollars for a third or additional violation within a year. Staff is recommending adopting higher fines for violations to encourage compliance with the current short term rental prohibition. And the fines would also assist in gaining compliance with any future regulations. Staff recommends that the city council introduce the ordinance. That concludes my report unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you very much. Other questions of staff regarding this agenda? Thank you very much. Other questions of staff regarding this agenda item from council members?
What's our complaint level like right now?
I haven't been receiving any complaints right now.
And this is for short-term rentals under, under 30 days? Is that correct?
Correct. Oh, I take that back. I have one complaint.
Oh.
For Skylark.
Okay. So our, our ordinance now prohibits short rentals shorter than a 30-day period of time.
Correct. And there's some, yeah, there's some complexities when it comes to the management company at Skylark using their units for
For construction employees.
Construction employees are using, it's our understanding that they're letting some of the tenants live in different units while construction is taking place and also allowing some of their employees to use their furnished units for short periods of time. And that hasn't been found to be out of compliance so long as they're Skylark employees.
But essentially, our ordinance was created by public policy to prohibit Airbnb's and short-term rentals that were disruptive to neighbors.
Correct.
So that's the one, two, three-day rentals. So just clarifying that we don't encourage that and it's not permissible in Larkspur for those to happen. So you have one right now, but other than that, we haven't had too many others that have come forward.
Not, not recently, no.
Okay.
Other council member questions on this agenda item? Councilmember Haroff?
Just for clarification, this is just to introduce the ordinance tonight. We're not going to be voting on it or waiving the first reading. Is that?
Recommending introduction and, and waving, waving the reading of the, or introducing by title only.
Right, right. Okay, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
It is a vote on the ordinance, just to clarify. It's just that it takes two steps, as, as you know.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So right. So we're, we're not going to complete the process tonight under any circumstances. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Thank you. At least I'm, I'm, I was digging through my notes. We, we had this discussion come up months ago where, you know, it seemed that we were in a gray zone. And I remember, you know, part of what I was hoping to see was that there would be some room, you know, for short terms, but under conditions. And, you know, being in a gray zone where things happen and they're not punished, or, you know, that didn't seem acceptable. But I, I suppose this is saying that there could be no Airbnb, no VRBO in Larkspur, or am I, am I reading that wrong?
Well, so the current rule is that they're not allowed. And so this would affirm that in writing because it's the only way we can increase the penalties is to, to have that as part of the ordinance. But it is still, staff is still planning to return with more discussion on allowing them subject to regulations.
Okay, because that's, that's what I was hoping for. So again, the process isn't just, you know, wave and, and introduce and then vote. It, it's also negotiate what might be the best for the community.
Correct. And then these fines would still be in place. So if you were to relax standards subject to certain requirements, it would help us implement those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions regarding this agenda item?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members on Zoom or in person. There's no public comment.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the city council for consideration. Councilmember Way, would you like to begin?
Sure, I'll move 7.1, introduce and waive first reading of ordinance 1060, amending section. You know what it says.
We have a motion that's sufficient.
But the, yes, I also, in that light, I will second it.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Haroff?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Homer?
Yes, that concludes the public hearings this evening. We'll move to business items. This evening, we have a public workshop, item 8.1, on options to regulate residential rent increases. May we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allison, I need your help so I can share a screen.
In one moment. Okay, it should be available now.
Thank you, Councilmember, Mr. Mayor, council members. First off, I want to emphasize something that the mayor said earlier. We agendize this as a public workshop. The council doesn't take definitive votes at a council workshop. They do, however, sometimes take votes or seek consensus to provide direction to the staff so that future agenda items can be refined and brought forward. So it was never the intent of this business item that any ultimate decision would be made this evening. So as I said, the purpose here is we, for the first time, are going to be providing information to the entire city council that staff has been collecting and sharing to some degree with the ad hoc committee. And we're doing that, seeking your general discussion on whether and how to move forward and in what manner we might move forward to further this policy discussion. The workshop format is designed to give the maximum amount of freedom to the council and how they want to engage staff, each other and the public. And so consider this sort of a, a roll up your sleeves and, and talk about it item. And you may, from time to time throughout the evening, try to seek consensus on particular points that will help staff understand what type of research you still want to see. And what type of future possible documents or agenda items you're hoping will be brought to you by staff. In particular, this workshop was scheduled at the behest of the ad hoc committee. That's Vice Mayor Paulson and Councilmember Haroff. They felt it was time for discussions about tenant landlord relations to be taken up by the entire council. And so they asked that we begin to bring agenda items, starting with your October meetings. You specifically charged your ad hoc committee to examine rent stabilizations. That's the focus of the workshop this evening. However, we do make reference to other options and tools that the council may want to give us direction to study. Either studying at staff level and bring back to the council, or you may want to expand the ad hoc committee's assignment to go back and do additional research. And we'll talk a little bit about what some of those particular policy items are. To date, the work of the ad hoc committee, the committee has been conducting general research, particularly staff at the guidance of the ad hoc committee has been doing research. Stakeholder meetings have been held, most notably with Prime Residential. Another was held with the Skylark Tenants Association, and a recent one was held with the Greenberry Property Management Company. Prime Residential and Greenberry Property Management are two of the largest operator, operators of two of the largest apartment complexes in the city. The ad hoc committee also held on via Zoom a public forum for tenants. Still outstanding for the ad hoc committee, the committee is going to hold a public forum for landlords. The committee is also hoping to schedule a meeting to facilitate some discussion between Prime Residential and Skylark tenants. All right. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go through this, but at any time, if the council wants to interrupt me, please go ahead and do so. Unfortunately, when I'm doing a PowerPoint, you're very small on my screen, so you may need to just interrupt me.
Dan, I'm You're very small on our screen too, so that's fine.
I'm going to pause now. In the event there are council members that have questions. Councilmember Way, did you have a question?
Sure. Since this is a roll up our sleeves moment, about what type of further research, I'd like to, to just find out if we have a strategy or plan for where this, when this research will be shared in a document form with the rest of the council from the ad hoc committee, or if that's the plan. So that it can be reviewed and, and cross-referenced.
Is that a question for the ad hoc?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, this is supposed to have a little bit of looser format. So I just, are we thinking that that's going to happen pretty soon, or?
So staff's probably read about 40 ordinances and the associated documents relating to those 40 ordinances around the state. I could certainly provide the link to each one of those. I tried instead to provide four that were illustrative of what I think are the key policy discussions for the council. But I'm happy to provide all of that. I will also, during this presentation, talk about some of the challenges and limitations that we face at the moment to providing you with data and analysis. I can't speak to any research that you may be asking for from the ad hoc committee members themselves. But if you would like, I can just start flooding the council and the public with links to everything. I tried to sort of give you a summary.
Maybe not a flood, but I thought maybe what would be handy for me to learn more and others to learn more is sort of like what we did with the new candidates meeting where Allison had a one sheet hyperlinks to a lot of different information about how the city works. I don't know if that would make sense, but there's just a tremendous amount of information to, to try to sift through. And that if we all had a central location where it could be, it could be reviewed, that would be helpful to me. So
Yes, the staff's currently building out a webpage with a lot of links on it, but I did try to hyperlink key research documents that are in the attachment to your staff report, and they were provided to electronically as hyperlinks.
Okay, thank you. And then just secondarily, because we're still on the same slide, do, are there any dates certain yet for the rest of the stakeholder meetings that we know of?
No, I don't have it certain yet.
But we're anticipating having at least two more for other stakeholder groups that have yet to have public process.
Well, I don't agree with the statement. They haven't had public process that had these meetings. We, the ad hoc committee has specifically said it wants to hold a forum for landlords.
Okay.
I postpone that because there are challenges with reconciling our own databases with the assessor's database. And I think what we're going to do at this point is send out invitations to not only landlords who are certain or affected by these rules, but landlords who are not entirely certain their properties fall within the bounds of regulations you may or may not be considering. We just may have to err on that side, which may be unfortunate. We may notify somebody that potentially could be affected when they're not. Unfortunately, no one collects data the way it would ideally be collected so that you could readily identify all the, all the properties. If we were smaller in scale, it'd be pretty easy, but as the council knows, and you've heard from a number of public commenters, we have a rather substantial number of rental units. And we are trying to go through all of that data very carefully. I was actually quite surprised to discover that more than half of the rental units that we believe could be subject to rent regulations, should we, should the council desire and move forward, are in buildings that are 12 units or less. I think there's been a huge focus in our conversation on one particular complex and in general, in large complexes. But most of our renter population doesn't actually live in large complexes.
Thank you. That was helpful. And I, I misspoke about not having public process for them. Everyone's invited and engaged to come here. I, I just meant specific workshop, like we provided a workshop specifically for registered renters. I was looking to just clarify that we still have to have a public workshop for registered property owners. That's all.
I, I had, just to tag on to what Dan was saying, so, you know, I, I believe Councilmember Way, part of the question was whether the ad hoc committee is going to try to condense what we've done. And I, I did talk to the city manager about this and I, I kind of feel like I didn't want us to get ahead of their research. So it's dedicated research. I mean, I'll, I'll speak in a, in a moment. You know, me personally, I have stacks of things I've looked through, but I don't want to obfuscate the discussion. And, you know, I think, you know, Dan has a professional staff and that. But I do have a question for the city manager. When the staff report comes, you know, when the website comes, I, I understand that there would be, for example, sample ordinances and possible analysis of those ordinances, but most of our staff reports have recommendations or something like that. What, what do you see as the components of a staff report here? You know, so I sort of know what, you know, what to expect, what to try to work with.
I think I need to be really clear. I have no intention, unless I am specifically instructed by the council to draft sample ordinances. I will provide links to existing ordinances. There are a number of them around the state. I'm, it is, it is, while I told you at the last council meeting, it's not particularly difficult for the city attorney and, and the city manager to sit down and sketch out an ordinance. Doing so in the absence of direction and consensus from the council isn't the best use of taxpayer resources. So I, I'm not planning on doing that unless you tell me you need that to further your deliberations. The other thing is, I'm, I'm a little unclear what you mean about recommendations in a staff report. Are you asking when will staff come with recommendations? And if that's the inquiry of the council, I need direction. But some of the discussion this evening is intended for you to begin to see the questions that you have to provide direction to me on before I'll know what I can recommend to you.
Yeah, I, I, maybe more to come, but just a, you know, a thought here is, you know, recommendations are maybe not the right word, but some, you know, if, if staff is looking at 40 ordinances, you know, we could try to, you know, redo that and digest it. You know, maybe a sense of trade-offs or a broad framing of, of which way, you know, so taking 40 and dividing by three, like some have gone the Berkeley way, some have gone the Bell Gardens way, some have gone the, you know, AB 1482 way plus plus. So, you know, I think anything that could digest it for us without actually implying a direction, I, I, I think might be helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just Councilmember Haroff?
And then on, I just want to emphasize what our city manager has been saying here. And, and what Vice Mayor Paulson has been saying, I think, as well. We're not there yet. We are really at a process of gathering information from a variety of different stakeholders, from a variety of different resources, and trying to digest all of that. That is not an easy thing to do. I will emphasize the point of view that I have expressed personally before, which is the need for us to move expeditiously on this issue, but not incautiously. We have to be very careful about considering the potential for different options, for different directions and for different outcomes. We're really in the throes of that assessment right now. So I know there's probably a lot of interest in seeing a work product come out of this process sooner rather than later. I'm interested in that as well. But I am not interested in work product that is not thoughtful and considerate of all of the stakeholders that have a say in the outcome of this. And that's still going to take some time. As our city manager mentioned, if all we want to do is to crank out an ordinance, an ordinance can be cranked out. I don't know what that ordinance would look like, but it, we could crank out an ordinance. We're not going to do that. We have a thoughtful process that we are proceeding with. We are in the course of information gathering. We want the input for, from everyone who has something meaningful to say about this process. And we will not do something before that information gathering is completed.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, would you care to proceed?
I can certainly do that, Mr. Mayor. So let's start with the charge that we had to the ad hoc committee, which was to begin studying rent stabilization. What is rent stabilization? And we've heard folks say that rent stabilization, rent control are used interchangeably. I think that's generally correct. It's been my observation that rent stabilization seems to come into vogue as the label after the Costa-Hawkins Act was passed. But you do still find ordinances on the book that actually, books that actually talk about rent control. But you do still find ordinances on the book that actually, books that actually talk about rent control. But it's essentially a regulation by the government of the amount that residential rent can increase in a given period. You'll find if you do just a simple, even a search engine entry about the pros and cons of. Rent stabilization, that there's a lot of disagreement about what its purpose is. But generally, most of the documents, most of the literature all agree that it's a tool to protect tenants from displacement. Rent stabilization is an established police power of government, which is, which means that. It's exercised because the governing body has determined that is necessary to protect the health and welfare of the community. So. What you'll see in most rent stabilization ordinances are a series of determinations or findings by. The governing body, the city council in most cases. That support that there's a threat to health and welfare that needs to be addressed. Making rent regulation complicated from an administrative standpoint or from. It's not as streamlined as you might hope it would be in understanding is that. Understandably, courts have been clear that government cannot take a landlord's right to a fair rate of return. So that means essentially that if you put a ceiling or a cap on rent increases. You. Have to make sure that there is a process for the landlord to recover costs and to make a profit. The courts are very clear that a landlord is entitled to make a profit. So you have to give some path to the. Property owner landlord to petition or pursue exceeding the cap. Under circumstances that are warranted, such as if they've incurred extraordinary costs. They've made an investment in the property that they need to recoup. These types of costs are sometimes amortized across a number of years. And so. The rent increase is spread out essentially over, over some period of time so that the hit to the tenant in any given year. Is mitigated as much as possible. And depending on the complexity of the ordinance. How these processes play out can be. Quite detailed and significant administratively. But also a number of cities have created ordinances that. Try to streamline the evaluation of any petition by the landlord. And in fact, there's three models. For this process and we'll be talking about them later in the presentation. I'm sorry, actually, it's a type of, there's, there are different models, not three models. And there's two that we're going to emphasize later in the presentation. It's also important that we acknowledge and are aware of local regulation, that local regulation must consider state law. Most significantly, local regulation must. Adhere to the Costa Hawkins Rental Housing Act, which was adopted in February first nineteen ninety-five. I've cited the particular date. It's a, became effective that day. And the reason that's significant. Is that the act exempts all units that were built after this act took effect. So anything that was built after February first nineteen ninety-five is not. Subject to any local regulation regarding rent increases. Costa Hawkins also exempts certain units, most notably single family homes and condos. And most significantly, probably from the council's perspective, is that it prohibits vacancy control. When you say rent controlled, a lot of folks, they hearken back to a different era when some cities. Introduced vacancy control, which meant that a unit, when it changed hands. There was actually regulation of how much the unit's rent could increase. As a new tenant came on board. This led to folks essentially. Turning those low rents into assets under themselves and we have all seen or heard stories along the lines about that. That's prohibited now in California because of the Costa Hawkins Act. So. What that means in practical terms is that if you introduce any rent regulation. When the tenant changes, when a vacancy occurs, the property owner, the landlord can increase the rent to market rate. So the other significant state law I want to draw your attention to for this discussion purpose is one that we've alluded to a number of times. And that's the Tenant Protection Act of twenty nineteen, which we often refer to as AB fourteen eighty-two. This act established statewide rent regulation. It is the rent regulation that's in place in the city today. It set a rent increase ceiling at five percent plus a regional CPI. With a maximum of ten percent. So when the act went into effect, that CPI was relatively low. And so that cap, that ceiling was. Not that much above five percent, but of course, as we know now, we've gone into a period of higher inflation. And we've reached that maximum of ten percent. Interesting to note, the AB fourteen eighty-two actually has broader application than the Costa Hawkins Act. This law applies to. Any rental unit that's more than fifteen years old. So that actually captures some of the rental units that are not captured. By local regulation. And then in addition to rent regulation, it established statewide eviction protections. And I'm going to talk about those later in the presentation. And finally, it sunsets in the year twenty thirty. So. You might have seen or heard some articles that sort of talked about this as a, as a great experiment. And that sunset is the deadline to decide if this is something that should be renewed or not. Components of rent regulation. The most significant is a rent increase ceiling or a cap. And that's something that if you decide that you want to consider rent regulation, you're going to have to decide. What that cap should be. There's two general or common approaches that you see when you look at. The different types of rent regulation ordinances around the state. One is to simply establish a fixed percentage. Some of the ordinances just name a number and that's the number. Then other ordinances use a formula. And that formula often involves some consideration of CPI. A common way for it to be written is. A percentage of CPI or a fixed percentage, whichever is lower. So for example, a, a potential formula is seventy-five percent of CPI or six percent, whichever is lower. And you can insert whatever numbers you think are appropriate. Into the formula and you'll find a lot of different examples around the state of these, these formula. Of late, the, the fixed percentage that was most recently adopted was four percent by an agency. However. In some of the charter cities, there's discussions where they have rent regulation, there's discussions of going to the ballot and in fact. Santa Monica, please go in the ballot to move the number down to three percent. So. Also important to rent regulations, as I mentioned, is you need to provide a process for the property owner. Or landlord to seek a fair rate of return. There's a lot of different nuances to this, a lot of different flavors or approaches. But they all pretty much fall into one of two categories. One is a regulatory process, and this is, I think, the process most people think of. And in fact. A lot of the literature only applies the term rent stabilization or rent control to the regulatory approach. So in a regulatory approach, you're requiring the landlord to file an application with the jurisdiction. And that application would seek authorization to exceed the, the rent cap. So you think of it like a planning project. They would come in, fill in an application, turn in the appropriate documents. They'd be reviewed by staff. Staff would make some determination, depending on how the ordinance has been written. Staff might have some ministerial authority to approve or that authority goes to some sort of review board. Hence, many jurisdictions have a rent review board. And one of their roles is to review these applications. The other category that a lot of the ordinances fall into is more of a civil dispute process. Under that process, the landlord is required to provide notice to a tenant. That the rent will increase above whatever the adopted ceiling in the city is. And then the ordinance provides the tenant with some sort of process to dispute the increase. If they disagree with whatever explanation was provided in the notice. The general philosophy, when you go back and sort of look at the adoption of this approach is. That a lot of tenants and landlords work these things out, are comfortable communicating with one another. They don't need support to have that relationship work out. Whereas other tenants and landlords have difficulty with communication and need some sort of structure to resolve the dispute that they have. You'll see this sometimes called. Rent dispute or rent review, rent dispute review or rent review, when you go around looking at ordinances around the state. But it's still essentially has the same components of. Of the other approach of that there is some sort of cap or ceiling that triggers these requirements. And the enforcement authority in that latter process is usually some combination of mandatory mediation and then some form of arbitration. That arbitration can be a board that reviews the dispute or it can be an arbitration hearing officer.
Dan, Catherine Way would like to ask a question.
Okay.
So just in the style of the workshop form, I just had a question about that. We are as a city, as a municipality, often required by state law to enact various things, stormwater drainage. Mitigations of all sorts. If a property, if a state ordinance or state law comes down, so let's say hypothetically, in the next ten years, all. Multi-unit dwellings need a fire resistant roof. Because they live, we are in the urban wildland interface. So they, a property owner has to install. A fire resistant roof. Would that be under this section in which that's a planning process that they could then? Seek to have an adjustment to the cap of rent because they have now this extraordinary expense? That they had no control over?
Yes, and so that's a, that's an example of a type of expense where the property owner might seek relief by being allowed to exceed. Whatever the rent cap is. And like I mentioned earlier. Usually it's not, I need to recover this cost in one chunk, so the rent doesn't go up some, some. Extraordinary amount. It's usually. A proposal to amortize over time. And, and that's typical because the property owner is properly financed the investment. And so you are able to then essentially authorize some sort of bump in the rent. That goes over a period of time to reflect that, that cost that's being paid down.
I just can imagine there's lots of examples of health and safety concerns that not only. Individual property owners are expected to engage with, but residential structures. So I just curious about that. Thanks.
It's a good question. And in fact, in a recent discussion with a landlord, one of the things that was highlighted was. The mandates around balconies and bringing balconies to modern code and the costs are rather substantial.
You mean exterior balconies that people outside of, oh.
Exactly.
Yeah. Well, I just, I'm thinking of all of the regulations that, that have come down because we're in an urban wildland interface and as far as. Vegetation management within five feet of your structure, all different types of building materials that are now going to be required for anything. So. Just trying to understand.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So I mentioned that while the focus of the ad hoc committee has been on rent stabilization. The research leads you to recognize there are other regulatory concerns that the council may need to take up if you're interested in exploring. The topic further. The most notable are eviction protections. It's generally felt, or you'll see in the literature that the prohibition on vacancy control. Creates a possible incentive to evict tenants. If, if a unit becomes vacant at a low rent. And then you can move it to market rate, you might have a financial incentive to. Figure out a way to cause that vacancy. So most rent regulation is accompanied with some set of eviction protections, which tend to restrict evictions to at fault reasons. On the part of the tenant. So this is violating the lease, not paying your rent, violating the law, those sorts of things. It usually then says, no fault evictions aren't allowed with some exceptions. And there's usually some that are identified. And there's usually a requirement that if you are going to do a no fault eviction, then you need to. Compensate the tenant that you're forcing them to move. And there are several really common no fault evictions that tend to be exempted. And in fact, AB fourteen eighty-two. I'll provide you a list shortly and it's in the staff report. Addresses for the most common no fault eviction exemptions. And here they are. So under AB fourteen eighty-two. The, these are the four no fault exceptions. So this is the rule currently in Larkspur. These, these protections exist. The only no fault reasons that you can evict a tenant are one of these four reasons. And really. You're kind of limited to if you want to try to address these or, or change them, you're, you're tending to, to focus a lot at. The first one. And then what it means in the last one about demolishing or substantially remodeling the unit. You have to recognize that the Ellis Act provides a path for any property owner to, to essentially. Stop renting property and you, you can't regulate away that right. But as I noted. You can consider what the compensation should be. So AB fourteen eighty-two says it needs to be at least one month's rent. Some communities don't feel that is sufficient. And so they, they define a different compensation plan if a tenant is evicted. For a no fault reason.
Can I, can I ask if, of number four on there, the landlord wishes to demolish or substantially remodel the unit? Are there ways in which a timeframe is written into that? So. I can imagine a property owner of twelve units or less, let's say, decides they want to do a major renovation. Asks all the tenants to leave and then spends five years not doing anything and taking twelve units off the rental market.
I'd need, I'd need more time to research that question. I wouldn't be surprised if there's folks in the audience who will know the answer and can address it later. Because my focus has been on the rent stabilization, I haven't delved as deeply into. Some of the nuances of eviction protections.
That would just be, I mean, that would be helpful information for me because I know, I mean, you can imagine that there could be costs. Related to renovations and permitting processes and unexpected circumstances. And then suddenly you've got twelve less rental units that may sit vacant for five or ten years. I mean, we've had properties, single family residences that we've struggled to get people to finish their construction jobs. Over many years. So I'm just curious about that. So that might be, if we're going back to like what more information we need, that would be helpful for me. So.
Thank you. Continue. Thank you, continue.
Uh another issue that comes up, and this is one the council may remember discussing a few years back, is the establishment of a rental registry. I mentioned earlier that one of the challenges is having data. And being sure that data set is accurate and uh kept up to date. And contains the information that you want so that you're managing whatever it is that you're regulating, in this case. Potentially rent um or eviction controls or some other factor involved in the tenant landlord relationship. You you really need to consider making it mandatory for. Uh those that rent residential property to register their units in a database with the city. Um and you are allowed to do that. When the council took this up in two thousand nineteen, I think it found it difficult to to see a value. Because at that time you weren't considering. Any of these other issues, but if you decide you're going to go forward with. Rent stabilization in any form, rent regulation in any form, you'll certainly need to establish a rental registry. And um. One of the criticisms that I know council member, Vice Mayor Paulson, I've talked about and is highlighting a paper from the Turner Center. Uh is the fact that for AB fourteen eighty-two, we don't have data because we don't have a statewide rental registry, so we don't really know. Um how it's working, we can only speculate based on the data that is available. I've had a lot of people ask about the cost of rent regulation in any form, and I've heard. People tell me all sorts of things about what it will or won't cost. It's really going to be difficult for your staff to come up with a good estimate until the council starts to decide if it wants this program. And what the parameters of the program are, and I can put rough estimates on these different approaches for you, but. It 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 is challenging until we get a little farther down the path. Um in all likelihood, I think no matter what path you choose, if you choose to introduce any of this regulation. We're probably looking at someone uh hiring somebody, whether that's an in-house person or a contractor. Uh with an outside entity, um we probably need someone who's a housing specialist, and then we probably would need additional support from. An outside entity, and I look at all the different cities, uh they all have some combination of this staff level. Support, whether it's in-house or entirely uh through other parties. Uh and there are a number of entities, uh for profit and nonprofit that are working in this area that uh in this policy area. Uh so I do think there would be resources to be found if this is a path the city wants to go down. You've had a lot of folks sort of casually tell you, well, the direct costs are readily recovered. Because you're allowed to establish a fee for your rental registry to register the units. That's correct, however, I think if you had a chance to look at the uh Bell Gardens uh. Information that was part of the link in the attachments, um. What you'll see is, I think, a very honest observation in their staff reports, which is. Uh it's going to take a year or more to create a defensible rental registry fee. So because you need to, in order to have a fee and adopt it, you have to be able to defend the fee that you've established, and to. Defend a fee that you've established, you have to know the true costs of the program that you're trying to. Uh offset with the fee, so in all likelihood. If the council moves down this path at rent regulation, you're probably absorbing the first year of the cost. Uh whatever they are, uh until you have a defensible fee in place.
Uh quick question, um Dan, if I may, um so you had mentioned forty ordinances and. Um do you have a sense for the most restrictive and the least restrictive in that number, like? Maybe Bell Gardens on one side and Santa Monica on the other?
In terms of the fee?
No, in terms of of uh you know, the the um amount of, you know, the the. You know, how low the cap is and how uh rigorous the, you know, just cause evictions and all the regulations are, you know. Uh you know, on a spectrum of of um uh strictness in in, you know, rent stabilization.
Well, any ordinance that says the lower of CPI and some modest fixed income number three, four percent. Is pretty restrictive and that's, that's, you see that in several of the ordinances that that I was reviewing. Because if you're in a period of low CPI, that's a very low number. Um so. I'd have to go. Back and take a look to see what the most restricted is on the fixed side of things. Uh I've seen four percent probably as the most common in terms of a very restrictive number. You also have to keep in mind, when you adopt that number or that formula. You're setting the threshold for where the landlord needs to be thinking in terms of appealing. Uh in order to go above that number, so if you set that number really low, you may be triggering more applications.
Yeah, that's sort of where I was going with this, um I'm wondering if it's possible. To, you know, say at the other end of the range would be A AB fourteen eighty-two, you know, a ten percent, so somewhere, you know. Someone who's adopted something slightly more restrictive, um if there's any. Fiscal information, financial information on how costs correlates with with that restrictiveness. You know, administrative and, you know, appeals and so forth.
We can do that to some degree, one of the challenges here is that a lot of the agencies, the costs that they're bearing are not entirely about. The cap. That's also about petitions against evictions and the same staff. And same programs are essentially serving that side of the equation. Uh and in fact, I suspect in some of the cities with a long history of rent stabilization. There's quite a bit of activity on that side, and that that's actually where a lot of the costs are being incurred.
So to clarify, the the um appeals for uh unlawful detainers or evictions versus. Uh you know, landlords coming in and petitioning for higher um in, uh you know, um higher caps.
I I believe instinctively, I haven't had that level of conversation yet with different agencies. But I I, from what I've been looking at, it's some budgets that I suspect there's a lot of activity on both sides, but particularly on that side.
Okay, thank you.
So and then.
I just, Dan, before you go on in the last, in that last slide under number fourteen, costs. Which we were just discussing, you said, the last line says indirect costs.
Yeah, that was, I didn't get a chance to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fabulous, I'll hold up.
Okay. Um I I was about to offer that, it. It, we'd be remiss if we don't acknowledge indirect costs, which I think a lot of folks are quick to forget about. Um when they start to study this issue, um and this is one that. Um I now struggle with because the collection of this information is is to get this to dollar signs would. Is going to be time consuming, um and you'll recall it early on in this. Uh when this issue first came up, I had suggested we need to maybe retain somebody to really help us get at this from a neutral perspective, but. Um we have spoken with the county assessor and the assessors confirmed that. They would consider rent stabilization a trigger for uh an application for a rent, for a property tax reduction. So. An indirect cost to the city uh is essentially unrealized future revenue. Um in that maybe something that the council uh in the vacuum of just looking at the city. Equation um can handle or is comfortable with, but we also have to recognize we're not the only ones that receive property tax, and so if we're. Potentially introducing regulation that would affect the assessed value of property, we at least should acknowledge that. Um we are potentially affecting the tax streams to other agencies. Most notably, the school districts. So now I've hit that last point, and before I move on to questions for consideration, if there are other questions about about the information.
Are there further council questions before Dan moves to the next slide?
So in reading that um email, that's part of the public comment and the assessor's statement. It doesn't give a, it it just triggers an opportunity for a property owner to ask for a reassessment. Claiming a devaluation of their property, but it doesn't, that's what I understand. But it doesn't, it's not affirmative that they will have a reduction or a devaluation of their property, but they have an option now to do that.
They have an op, they, well, anyone always has an option to apply the property, the. The message from the assessor is that seems like a reasonable basis for an application.
Okay, um we don't know how much of a reduction in general.
Well, you can't, right, until you make some decisions, because if you, if you're essentially going to um. Let's just arbitrarily say you're going to set a rent cap, you've decided to rent regulation and you've decided a rent cap is. Four percent, the one that was recently adopted in another community. Um that then is the basis for somebody to do the math on a any individual property about the effect on. The revenue potential, but let's, but if you decide the rent cap should be eight percent. It's a different analysis with a different fiscal impact, so until, so it's hard for anybody, including the assessor, to. To do anything other than to speculate on what could happen, other than to say it is a real. Possibility that the council needs to be aware of. Since you have the letters in your packet, uh and in addition. Most of this discussion to date has been about the one apartment complex Skylark. Um you know, we have a unique situation where a property value that was established. Decades ago, um got reassessed with a recent sale, so. This is a very unique situation in some respects, um because of that variable being in play. So until, you know, if you decide to move forward with anything, then as we. We could maybe at least start to speculate more. Uh we can start to sort of guess at what the impact might be, but it's it's a little challenging right now.
Uh thank you, Dan, move to the next slide.
So uh as the mayor mentioned earlier, there are questions in the staff report, and I reiterated them in the slides. These questions aren't necessarily intended for you to answer them this evening. But until you answer them, it's going to be difficult for staff to prepare any sort of. Ordinance for an agenda item for the future, so. Whether you start to discuss these questions now, or you discuss them three, four meetings from now, whenever, that. Feedback will be what will ultimately allow staff to uh. Prepare something for you to consider in a public hearing down the road. Um with that said, I wanted to highlight these questions because. They give you a chance to sort of see what the overarching questions are and start to think about more. Uh refined requests for information that you may need in order to to advance this discussion, so. You know, you will have to decide if you want to do a rent regulation ordinance, and. You know, if you do, you're going to have to come to some consensus on what that ceiling or cap would be. Um and then in addition, the approach that we're going to use if we go down this path, so. Essentially, are we going to uh head down the category of. Uh staff administered code enforcement and regulations, so that application to the city structure and and the city would then review the application from. Uh the landlord, or is it one that uses the conflict resolution approach of mediation and arbitration? Um and we provided you with two examples of each of these approaches in the hyperlinks and in the attachment. Um so that you had a chance to see. See them and see these sort of different flavors of of how they're done. Uh we highlighted Bell Gardens in particular, because that is the most recent city in California to adopt an ordinance. Oxnard wasn't that far ahead of them, so we highlighted that as well. And then on the other side of the equation with the more mediation arbitration approach, we gave you Los Gatos and Fremont, which um. Which have two different approaches to how they do the arbitration, but essentially using the same basic model. Uh and then at some point, I think it it'll be difficult for you to complete this conversation if you don't. At least have some discussion about whether you find the eviction protections in AB fourteen eighty-two sufficient, or if you want to visit them. Um as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm I've concluded my presentation and uh can turn it back to you.
Okay, well, I want to open up the public comment uh quickly, but I I I just have a question on the. The uh. The first question on the last slide. It's the first, I guess it's the first. Part question under the major question regarding consensus on the council about what the rent increase ceiling should be. I don't know how the council can have. A. A meaningful discussion about what that should be, given the. Uncertainty and unknown sets of facts regarding many of the properties, and and it just seems to me that. Picking a number, thinking that that's a fair number. Is just as ridiculous a reason to pick the number as picking a number because we think it might limit the number of. Uh applications to uh challenge the the increase. So I I I really don't see reasonable. Factors being presented to the council as a basis to pick a cap, I don't even know what those. Complete list of those factors would be. It just seems like the the rationale is all indirect and not directly related to the problem we're being asked to solve. So which makes it really hard for for me. I can only speak for myself, so um. I'm going to open it up for public comment now, are there members of the public that would like to ask questions and make comments regarding? This agenda item, it's a public workshop. Yes, sir. Uh we prefer that you get on the microphone for the record, that way um. Anybody watching the the stream would appreciate your creativity. Welcome, please tell us your name and where you live.
Uh my name is Robert Edler, and I live at Skylark apartments, number thirty-six, building ten. So this is for Mr. Schwartz, um first of all, thanks very much for the letter, because I found that um. You are indeed correct, the city of Berkeley has probably the most impressive of all. Websites I've ever seen in terms of how they navigate, negotiate and. Deal with rental control issues, and it's actually, uh they have primitive, the people who want to read their site. Um. My recommendation is that whatever we do. We must choose a solution that can scale. And I think that one of the reasons that, um although Berkeley says they have nineteen thousand units and we have, I don't know, I mean. We might have five thousand, but there might be sort of like two thousand that are qualifiable. Um. You know, uh look at what the big guys do, because you can always reduce that down. But when you pick a small solution, it never goes upwards, is what I'm saying, so it's a, it's just a point I wanted to bring up because it it does work for many areas. The question I had, um the first question I had was, you brought up the issue that a landlord. Who now has to insert or use rent control, has a case to decrease. Um his potential or have his property rephrased for a potential decrease in tax, is that correct?
That's correct.
What happens on the other end?
I don't understand your question, I'm sorry.
Um say that I live in an apartment where. Today I might pay twenty-one hundred, and in three months, I mean, in three years, I'm paying twenty-nine hundred. What happens to the property tax of my landlord when the rent increases so substantially? of my landlord when the rent increases so substantially? Does he pay increased property tax? How is that found out? Because you said there is no red registry. Isn't that correct?
You'll have to give me some guidance on how you want me to participate.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know if I was, yeah, I don't know.
Um, no, I'm, I'm happy to have the, the,
That's just the question then.
Why don't you ask me the question?
Sure.
And then he'll
What happens in a, in a case when, uh, something like AB fourteen eighty-two allows landlords to say double their rents? What kicks the property tax up in that case? Because certainly they're not gonna make an application to have their property tax increased and there's no rental registry.
Well, the assessment includes more factors than just that.
Okay, so you're saying that it may go up if the rents fall.
It, it depends on a larger picture of which that would be one part.
I just wanted to know that. So in fact, that's the fact of the case.
But the, the issue being discussed is, and being asked of the assessor is if a property is subjected to rent control and therefore can only charge, uh, a certain amount of rent, lesser than the market. Lesser than the market rate. Would they be allowed to apply for a lesser, a reduction in their property value? If they're not allowed to cha- charge full market rate for rent?
Right, but they're charging the same amount they charged today.
It's kind of an apples and oranges discussion here, because they're talking about what the assessor would be.
Well, I think it's, it is important. It was raised as an issue contrary to rent control. And in fact, that, um, such a, such a plan might reduce the revenues of the city, and I just wanted to examine.
Correct, and other entities too.
People who are supplied by those that, uh, to examine in fact what does happen on the reverse case when the rents are increased substantially. Does the city benefit?
The property taxes increase if the assessments increase, because, and that could be increased if their, uh, revenue streams are increasing, I submit. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to help me here.
I think the, the, the basic answer is we, we did not pose that question to the assessor, so we don't really have an answer. The, the baseline situation that we're talking about that the city manager identified in the staff report is that there is a a legal principle that, um, if a governmental restriction um, affects the greater return, including rental income um, for a property type where rental income is part of the basis for determining the assessed valuation, that that restriction can be taken into account and should be taken into account by the assessor's office in establishing the assessed value, which then affects the property tax. But, but the important piece of that is the introduction of a governmental restriction that affects rental incomes. We did not ask the, the assessor's office about whether or not in a marketplace in which, um, uh, there is no restriction, but rental incomes are increasing by substantial amounts year over year, whether or not they take that into account in, in increasing the assessed valuation, but also understand that under, uh, Prop two eighteen, that under, uh, Prop thirteen, there are limits on the ability of the assessor to increase the assessed valuation of property. The baseline is that it can't go up more than two percent a year. There are exceptions to that and I, and I don't, we did not talk to the assessor about, about rent income increases and the effects of that.
I'm not trying to stick my finger in the glue, but I
No, but it's, it's a fair question, but the answer is we don't know.
Yes, exactly. Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Um, I think the, um, only thing, um, I wanted to say in front of the council tonight is that when I look at, um, the city of Berkeley and their three percent and their, you know, sixty percent or three percent CPI system, um, and they list it from the past twenty years, how much it increased every year and what exceptions were given. It, it forms a, a relatively, you know, um, solid framework as to what happens in a case like that. I would like to say that in my case here, um, as of this year, my rent went from twenty-one to twenty-three fifty. And you know what's gonna happen in the next two years, I'll be near three thousand dollars. And I've noticed several comments about, I, I guess my question is what? Uh, the question I can't seem to answer is what allows somebody to suddenly appear and charge market rate? And I feel that um, Costa Hawkins, um, the fourteen eighty-two bill allows, um, Costa Hawkins to be circumvented and people who are in place today have their rent escalated to market rate within, you know, a three-year period. So, like, it's, uh, I think what we need to just, I have, uh, everybody's entitled to do whatever they wanna do. I'm just talking about the legislation per se is the actor here. Uh, without that piece of legislation, we wouldn't be here tonight. Hence, the rent control issue. This isn't, I don't think we're all trying to be unfair, but this is what we're, we're saddled with. So I just feel like, um, you know, I wanted to have to say that because I wanna unburden them. It's not a personality situation. Um, it's just, you know, this is the, this is the new law that we're faced with here.
I, I think, I, I think you are articulating the difficult public policy issues that arise with this, with rent stabilization, rent control. There are a myriad of factors that, um, are engaged in this, and there's a lot of public policy decisions that have to be um, weighed between the individual property owner, the individual renter, the decrease in property tax potential and how that influences how much money we have for first responders and for other, you know, so just so we can sort of frame it, and I appreciate that, that, that's why I'm really struggling to try to make sure we're understanding it completely, because it's a very passionate for, on all sides, a very passionate and, and very painful situation that many people are going through. But as policymakers, we have to figure out, um, what serves very often the greatest need for, um, long-term maintenance of policy. So um, I appreciate you bringing that forward though, because it adds more to the complexity of what we're trying to do.
Right, and it's always the detail you don't find that nails you in the end. And that's why I think some of the large, the larger cities that face these kind of things are sometimes a good test case for that, because they've seen a lot of snags. Um, so anyway.
Well, I think that's true in many ways. Berkeley is an, is also a university town with sixty-five thousand units or something. So, I mean, we are, you know, we have to also then sort of see where we are as a community that's a, as a different format than that, so.
Right, well, I think the rental program, we're talking about it was a bit different from, you know, what I saw, but maybe I could be wrong on that thing, but, um,
Well, tha- thank you.
Yeah. Thanks very much and thanks for your time and all your courage to face this issue. It's, it's a, it's a big issue. I will say though, however, that like many people, um, I can't afford to move to twenty-five hundred. So, it's the end of the story for me, and that was not what I thought was gonna happen. And that is something that cannot be underestimated. Um, especially as those of you who have properties or whatever in this town, you know, it is the single most expensive thing that I pay for. And when it inflates and then it increases, um, it is horrific, because you're living in this place and you know you're not gonna do it. And it's not a great feeling. So, um, I would like you to understand that, because I do like this town.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Kevin Carroll.
Good evening. Marin mobile home park.
Yes, sir.
Kinda had that.
Nice to see you.
Um, just one point. You know my opinions about most of the issues that Dan talked about, and I'm not gonna repeat them, but when it comes to the indirect cost about the property tax, I think it's a little weird that you asked the Marin one who has no experience with rent control cities in Marin County. Uh, and I would suggest that maybe talking to, um, Ox- Oxnard, I believe is in Ventura County. Um, Los Gatos is in Santa Clara and, uh, Fremont and Alameda. Uh, that maybe talking to those assessors might be a better picture, and they could give you a better idea of any differences in property taxes with neighboring communities that don't have rent control. So that you could get a better picture of what financial implications are indicated. Um, in following Berkeley for years, um, I've never heard them complain about a lack of income because of rent control. That's never, I've never heard that as an issue as opposed to Emeryville or Oakland. So, um, that was just one point too. Fairfax tonight is considering the same issue, and I listened to their last meeting. Uh, and it was interesting because, uh, the tenant points of view were almost identical to what you've heard, and the questions you've raised are similar to what they're asking. Uh, so I would just, I'm gonna go check it out when this, and if this meeting ever ends, uh, to see what they're doing.
I guarantee you it will end.
But when?
Well, you might take a break. Um, and then just last is, I noticed not included in this is the question of whether mobile homes and houseboats are gonna be included, uh, under this ordinance. I sent the committee a copy, um, the governor just signed the bill on Maguire, which one of the co-sponsors. That limits rent increases on houseboats now. And I don't know if it applies to Larkspur Marina. Um, but it's a question I think should be answered, plus the question of mobile homes. Will this be included in the same ordinance, or will there have to be a separate ordinance? Thank you.
Well, the question of an ordinance is still up, up in the air. Are there other members of the
Mr. Mayor, just so there's no confusion, it is a separate body of law, so the, addressing the mobile homes will have to be done separately. You can talk about it, but you're gonna need a different ordinance.
Uh, thank you for that clarification, and we are sensitive to all of this. Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions, make comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, um, Will Madison, representing Skylark Apartments. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank staff for very thorough report. Uh, obviously, it appreciates the nuance of situation. Um, I wanted to give an update first on our, uh, voluntary efforts to combat in particular the issue of displacement, right? That's been the focus of, uh, the discussion. Um, when we talked to you last, we had seven residents who had qualified. That was three weeks into the program. Uh, we now have eighteen actually that have qualified, which is increased from, uh, even when we sent our letter. And the average discount is three hundred and seventy dollars a month. So hugely meaningful to those who are participating. And again, focusing on avoiding displacement, and we hope to be able to continue that, that effort. Um, you know, we wanted to also appreciate that the manager's discussion uh, brought up the uniqueness of our situation in particular, where we made an investment very recently and made it, uh, under a regulatory environment that had been established in Larkspur very recently with the council. You know, these four same, same members who are here tonight deciding not to pursue rent control twice in the last, uh, couple of years. So, um, you know, I think that is what uh, leads to such a difficult property tax question in particular, because, uh, you know, there's been a lot of questions about that. Tonight, uh, the assessor must, um, mark each property at its market value. Regardless of kind of all the other factors that, you know, set that market value. So if that market value goes down, the assessor must recognize that. Um, so just, you know, perhaps that's the simplest way to, uh, to think about it. So we are here to say um, that, uh, you've seen us at these meetings. We've had meetings with residents directly. We're here to find a solution. We're not here to, you know, take a black and white view of this. We know it's a very uh, passionate discussion, and we wanna recognize that the crisis, uh, of housing in California is very serious. Um, and it's colliding here in this community. Um, but, you know, there, there's a willingness on our part to participate in a solution, and we hope we'll have the chance to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public here this evening that would like to make comments or ask questions on this item? Yes, sir.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Mike Kibler. I'm litigation counsel for Prime Residential. The, 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 this is not my typical forum. My typical forum is courts. But Prime asked me to come here today, um, in the spirit of this proceeding as a workshop where the council is grappling with some very weighty issues to add another, uh, item to the council's consideration. While there's no ordinance for us to look at and analyze right now, um, given the unique circumstances of Prime's investment in this community in a very specific regulatory framework, that raises not only issues of appraised value and property taxes, but it raises the real specter of litigation, and we think, um, and Prime will assert its rights in court um, if it has to. It's not its first choice, it's not its second choice, third, or it is certainly a last choice. Um, and the, and without getting into too much of the details, we think that given the unique timing and the regulatory framework against which, uh, Prime acquired this property and invested in this community, um, it presents a, a, um, kind of crystallized claim for a regulatory taking, um, depending on how an ordinance would come out here. And so um, I offer these comments in the spirit, um, of this proceeding again. Um, this is not a threat by Prime Residential at all. It's just that there are significant legal constitutional issues that also become implicated as the council, um, starts to grapple with some of these waiting, weighty issues after this workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that would have comments or questions regarding this agenda item this evening? Allison, are there people in the, uh, online that would like to participate in the workshop with questions or comments?
We do have some raised hands. Our first commenter will be Anil Babar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Anil Babar on behalf of the California Apartment Association. I wanted to address you today to speak in oppo- in opposition to the topic under eight point one and speak in general on the topic. Uh, speaking on behalf of the California Apartment Association, we see rent stabilization, rent control, you call it what you will, it's the same thing in many cities, and we've, uh, dealt with these in many cities, and we've seen the impacts, the negative impacts they've uh, unleashed on just, not just the potential development potential of, of those cities, but also the cost to the city and the bureaucratic hurdles of the, it implements in those cities. Um, so my objection today to moving forward is rooted in the consequences a rent, rent control would have on the city of Larkspur. Rent control is a costly and bureaucratic work, uh, tool. It's a deterrent to adding housing. It can also lead to a loss of housing. We saw this in Mountain View recently, about eighteen months after their ordinance was adopted. Uh, they lost about seven hundred units. And then less, and I think it, it was said by the, the city manager, and I wanna underscore this, it, it, it hasn't, it's been barely two years since AB fourteen eighty-two, which made tenant protections across the state in the form of both rent control and just cause. Uh, we feel that that's become a settled matter, which allows you to really just focus on the best way of making housing affordable, which is adding additional housing. Given the negative impact that rent control has had on the development of housing, Larkspur should reject further action on this issue and send a signal to your residents that you're serious about increasing the supply of housing by focusing on purely production at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, who's next?
My next speaker will be Anonymous.
Hi, Anonymous.
And Hi, I think I'm anonymous.
Are you?
Oh, good. How are you doing? Um, uh, just a side note, I have COVID too, my first COVID. My husband too, and two other residents here at Larkspur Courts. Um, we self-tested, uh, just to make a note, there's no way of reporting that. So, just to be clear, um, so, uh, my name is Heather. Oh, my, sorry. My name is Ann Clark. Um, I live at, uh, Larkspur Courts, and, uh, I just wanna, uh, just touch upon one point, and that is, um, when you're considering, if, if you are considering enacting a rent control, um, stabilization ordinance, um, I think it really needs to be clarified in writing that it is only stabilizing rent increases. It is not affecting the base rent, initial move in rents in any way. Um, therefore, I think, uh, the ordinance should be really written as stabilizing rent increase ordinance. Uh, because everyone, specifically landlords and investors, get really angry and opposed to rent control ordinances. Uh, they have the money behind them, uh, connected network of real estate associations. Um, so the stabilizing rent increase ordinance really clarifies that it's only affecting rent increases, not the initial move in rents. Um, in the California state law, AB fourteen eighty-two, it is only infecting the rent increases. Though it is still too high for moderate to low-income residents. Uh, it is a start, but our local government needs to take it further. And thank you all for considering this. Stay well.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, who's next?
Next we'll hear from Mike.
If you uh, were. Hello, we're conducting a public workshop, so I'm trying to be flexible with the time. But I would just encourage everybody to try to be concise with their remarks.
Hello, uh, can you, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, pleasure, uh, council, pleasure, everyone, pleasure. Uh, am a proponent of uh, the moratorium and on uh, placing penalties on those who. Uh, feel entitled uh, to uh, randomly increase people's rent. Um, this is a major issue as uh, just have come to see that. While Marin is very beautiful, uh, there is perhaps too much money here. And have seen the effect that it has on how people get too crazy about their private property. You know, they get very hostile. Uh, have seen the effect that it has uh, just when it comes to the potential drug issues uh, and the like. Uh, just there is too much money here and there aren't just, listen, I'm all for uh. Earning money and I'm all for private property too. You know, you don't want people just randomly coming up to uh, your property, but there, there also need to be. Uh, these safeguards so that other uh, members, not just wealthy, uh, also have their rights here. Uh, because if we allow the wealthy uh, to get too much influence. Uh, and to have too much control, uh, then that shuts out everybody else and does not allow them to. Uh, have their rights and feel welcome in this town. Uh, also, so it just wanted, want people to be very, very careful about that. I think that this rent. Control is definitely a good way to go on that.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, who's next?
Next we'll hear from Evan Linken Felder.
Welcome. I'm gonna ask you, do you limit your comments to three minutes?
Of course we'll do. And real quick before I start, Dan, can I ask you? Thank you again for your points. Can you pull up your first slide on the comment on what is rent stabilization? Is that possible?
It's a question for the city manager, I believe.
There was just a definition on what is rent stabilization that had three points and I just wanted everyone to look at point number two. That it is viewed as a tool to protect the tenants from displacement. Um, and, and the number, bullet number three, and the very last sentence is determined that it is necessary to protect the health and welfare of the community. Um, this, the only reason we're having all these meetings over the past two, three months now is that the community is calling out to the city officials for help. And I am simply just asking the city officials, will you listen to your constituents and answer their call for help? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Allison, who's next?
Next we'll hear from Joshua Howard.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Joshua Howard. Um, I join my colleague Anil from the California Apartment Association. And want to offer some additional perspective on the issue of rent control, rent stabilization that you're discussing tonight. And I first want to follow up on a comment that council member Way made about the issue around. Making some renovations to buildings, especially in the fire improvement district or in the area subject to wildfires. Um, several rent control ordinances across the state of California were written in such a way. That they actually don't allow an owner to pass on or recover the costs for things like seismic retrofits, for things like um. Fire protection. So it's very important as you're drafting or considering a rent regulation scheme that you. Are considered and important to understand that when you don't allow for things like that, it actually needs to lessen investment in housing and makes housing less safe. By virtue of the rent control ordinance. I think it's also important to recognize the cost of rent control and a rent control program. If you look around the state of California, at the twenty plus cities that have some form of rent regulation, the cost is actually in the millions of dollars. Um, city of Pasadena, which has a ballot measure this November for rent control, an independent analysis found that's gonna cost five and a half million dollars. To implement rent control in the city of Pasadena and require twenty-six employees. City of Mountain View, which adopted rent control back in twenty sixteen, the proponents said to the voters, don't worry, this won't cost very much and won't require much staff. Only to find now they're hiring seven employees and the cost of the program continues to escalate year over year. So it's really important that you go into this recognizing it's gonna cost the taxpayers more. There are unintended consequences to. Rent control like policies, but I also want to go back to Assembly Bill fourteen eighty-two, the California Tenant Protection Act. Which you've talked about extensively. It's important to recognize that bill went into effect on January first, twenty twenty. Seventy-five days later, we found ourselves in the midst of a global pandemic and government orders and regulations that put rent freezes. We saw the rent. Rental market actually declined during that time and we're just now coming out of things like eviction moratoria, rent freezes. And related policies. So we've not had a full opportunity to see how AB fourteen eighty-two operates. In a market that would be somewhat normal. So encourage you to really look at programs like mediation, dispute resolution. Programs that actually allow tenants to bring their. Concerns forward in a safe place like the city of Fremont has done in the past. I would encourage you to continue to work with stakeholders and to really go back with the city manager's comments earlier about. How many units would really be affected? One of the demographics of those units. Our analysis of the rental housing portfolio in Larkspur suggests that. About ninety percent of the units are smaller buildings, smaller properties that are locally owned. So really want to make sure that you evaluate how this would affect Larkspur residents who provide housing for other Larkspur residents. And I'll just close by saying the California Apartment Association uh, is willing and continues to offer its resources to continue to provide information and resources. You may need as you look at alternatives to rent stabilization and looking at ways to provide balanced protections for both housing providers. And the renters of your community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Allison, who's next?
Next we'll hear from Brian Steele.
Hi, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Brian Steele. I've been here in, in Marin for fifty years and lived in Larkspur for about twenty of them. Previous caller, the previous speaker, well, if they add, if they have to add, if you have to add jobs, great, because that helps the economy and then helps people get jobs. But my point is, I don't want Marin to become a place where people don't, can't live. In a, in a fair, in a, in a, just live in a nice place. I don't want to have Marin become like. When I would drive up to Nevada, up to Petaluma, see half the road, you know, filled with, with uh, RVs and, and. Just full of people on the side of the, on the, on the lakeside of Nevada. That's not what, what, what the county and, or, or the, the place of where we live is supposed to be about. I'm, I'm split on, 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 on rent control. I, I, I believe that the companies should have their rights. Um, I just know that I, I would probably be leaving sooner than later than with, than later. If I, if the rents go up at, at, at this rate, so. I don't know how many people you want to have left in the community who, who actually not, don't live here. Um. Also, I want to say one other thing. I hope that the town also takes into consideration the state bills. I, and I can't remember what it is about rezoning like home, homes and splitting them and rezoning them so that you can increase homeownership in the, in the county. And forget about NIMBYism because it does, this, those bills need to be enforced. And those rezoneings need to be done so that housing can become a, a bigger part of, of, of where, where people live and how people live. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, uh, how many more do we have in the queue?
We have two hands raised currently.
Great.
Oh, and I doubled to four, just in that.
Okay.
Um, so the next is Dorothy O'Leary.
Please. Welcome. You have three minutes.
I'm sorry, I'm, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you, you can hear me? Okay, good. Um. Hi, uh, yeah, I live at Skylark Apartments. I know you've heard from a lot of us. And you need to take into account a lot more um, than just the Skylark residents. Um, I would like to point out that my, currently I consider. That I do not have stable housing. Um, I looked it up online and when I Googled the definition of stable housing. Uh, I was given the definition that it is having choice. Over when and under what circumstances a household wants to move. I don't feel like um, that choice, I, I do feel like that choice was taken away from me. When I got my ten percent in rent increase um, just recently. Knowing that that ten percent rent increase can be applied every year annually. Leaves me feeling like the rug's gonna be pulled out from under me at any minute. Um, I've said it before and I'll say it again, nobody on the planet gets a ten percent in um, pay increase annually. So I'd really like you to take into consideration what is reasonable for a person to earn annually. Um, and how much of that should be, you know, how much of a pay increase do people typically receive and. You know, um, parallel that with the ten percent rent increase that Skylark is able to give themselves annually. Um, I also ask that you take into account just the exorbitant amount of money. That go, that is being claimed by this extremely large corporation. And a, a large corporation like Prime is not invested in the individual needs of human beings that live in a community. Their primary concern, understandably, believe me, I, I get it, that, but the primary concern of a large corporation is to. Make as much profit as humanly possible, maximize my profit in any way, shape or form. And that's what they're doing. And I understand it. That's, that's, they have to answer to their higher ups. But um, that's where you guys come in. And we need to ask you guys to take into consideration a reasonable, reasonable um, cap. And the cap that we propose is sixty percent of CPI or a five percent cap, whichever is lower. When I consider a five percent rent increase, that still is a huge sum of money. Um, given that my, my rent is particularly high. And so I think that is reasonable. I want to point out that my, I have uh, two brothers in other parts of the country who are landlords. And when they hear the amount of money that my rent was increased, their response was, that's insane. And my one brother is currently putting his children through college and um, is still able to maintain the. The building that he owns and rents out to um, his tenants. Uh, he does not implement these kinds of rent increases. So. This is just not what I would consider, you know, standard. Um, it is standard for an incredibly large corporation like Prime. But I am one individual, as are my neighbors, and I have many neighbors who have already fled.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, okay. I guess I've said everything. So thank you for listening. Sorry if I took too much time.
No, perfect. Thank you very much for your comments. Allison, who's next?
Next will be Mary Beth Pascal.
Um, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, great. And thank you all. This has been a process for sure. I am a resident of um, Skylark. I've been here for forty-one years. And my question is, who's gonna live here with these rent increases? You know, what, what, it's only, it can only be an, a wealthier community. Because the minute these rent increases went into effect, people had to leave. And there's many, many of us here who are looking for, looking that that's on the table. So who's gonna live here? You know, you're gonna have to make, you know, probably a hundred thousand dollars because once you do that, they take out taxes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You might even at the end of the day there be paying forty percent of your income to live here. People um, don't have to live in Marin anymore uh, so much because of teleworking. You know, many people are saying, I don't, you know, people that I know personally are saying. I don't need to live here. They can live almost any place. They can telework from many, many places. They don't need to say, I need to live in Marin so I can work in the city. And so I don't know who the tenants are going to be. And the other part of that is, is that if you have only room for upper income tenants. Where are the people that work in Marin going to live? They already don't live here. For a great, a great majority of them don't. And I happen to work here. I work at the Civic Center. I've been there for twenty years. I work with many, many people that can't afford to live in Marin. You know all this, this story. There's an hour commute. They're up at five thirty in the morning, et cetera, et cetera. So you might end up having a population up here of upper income people, but I sure don't know who they are. Because this is not gonna necessarily be desirable to them. They can find better places. You know, for themselves. And of course, you know, we're fighting for a roof over our heads. For us that have lived here. And, and our rent is not cheap. It's not like this is a free, this is a freebie here. You know, we are paying a substantial rent anyways. So um, just wanted to throw out, throw that out there for you all and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, how many are in the queue?
Three hands are currently raised.
Okay, please, uh, let the next one in.
I will next hear from Julie Neustatter.
Hi, um, I want to thank you all for um, taking in all the information and really um, considering all the sides here. Um, I want to echo what Dorothy said. Um, I think she's right on the money there. Um, and. Uh, I just want to say, uh, I don't remember who it was that was speak, speaking from uh, one of the, the rent boards. And comparing uh, Pasadena and um, Mountain View. Uh, I think that there are about uh, like several thousand units. Or for rent, that are renting here in Larkspur where there's thirty-two thousand in Pasadena. So those numbers have nothing to do with Larkspur and there's nineteen thousand in Mountain View. So if you're taking those numbers as something that you're gonna have to pay, plus. We've got um, legal aid that says they're gonna help with this program for free. Um, that some of those numbers just aren't real. Um. The rents rising ten percent every year are not sustainable. You're not gonna have any tenants. Um, and everybody's gonna flee. Uh, so. I think that's all I'm gonna, gonna say, gonna say today. I'm a little too emotional to keep, to keep speaking, but um. Yeah, the company, companies should not. Own homes. Homes are where humans live. It's the heart of the community. And when people cannot afford to live here, you will not have any community. So uh, I, the sixty, sixty percent of CPI. Or five percent, whichever is less, is plenty of money to be raised. And it gives renters a fighting chance to actually stay and live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, who's next?
Next will be Kurt Reese.
Hi.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Wonderful. Um, so uh, my name is Kurt Reese. I am a San and Sommo renter and I'm here because I'm also the co-chair of a countywide campaign to establish rent control in Marin. I grew up here. I've watched the character of the county shift to where once ordinary working class people could afford to make it here and. Or now they're rapidly getting forced out of their homes. Um, countywide, we've collected over three thousand petition signatures from Marin residents in support of rent control and that number is nearly three hundred in Larkspur. It's going up and up every weekend that we're out there talking to folks. Um. Um, I just want to address two of the points that have been, uh, addressed this evening about the annual rental cap and just cause eviction protection. So on the annual, uh, annual rental cap, while it's true that, um, different jurisdictions have very different rental caps across the state, um, it doesn't necessarily follow that those caps are therefore kind of arbitrary or equally justified or unjustified. Um, in fact, the majority of longstanding rent control jurisdictions tie their annual rental cap to a percentage of CPI, and they do that precisely because it's not arbitrary. Um, CPI is an approximation of the annual increase in prices for consumers, including landlords. So by tying the rental cap to CPI, rather than having just a kind of arbitrary fixed amount, the council will be doing its best to approximate the increase in landlords' costs on a year-to-year basis. Um, now you've heard that community members have been urging the council to adopt the 60% of CPI standard or 5%, whatever is lower. That 60% is also not arbitrary. Uh, it's the standard in places like San Francisco and Oakland, the Bay Area's two major cities, because they're trying to extricate the cost of housing from the calculation itself. So failing to do that, right, for example, setting the, the calculation to be 100% of CPI would mean that essentially we're incorporating the skyrocketing market cost of housing into the calculation of CPI, which then would itself raise the rental cap even under rent stabilization. So 60% of CPI, uh, would be a cap that's tied to a real and fairly universally recognized measurement of increased prices, while also attempting to avoid essentially a positive feedback loop where a high cost of housing constantly are influencing the measurement by which we cap housing costs. Um, and then of course, the 5% annual cap is there as an additional failsafe against extraordinary, uh, inflation years like this one. And then just a, just a note on just cause eviction protection. So I think it really just needs to be underlined that just cause and rent stabilization go together because of vacancy decontrol. If you have rent stabilization and all you're left with are the, the regulations at the state level for just cause, it is so easy, and we've seen this for decades in cities that have rent control jurisdictions, um, where it's so easy for landlords to create loopholes within these no-fault evictions and essentially kick out their tenants and bring in a new one once they're able to take advantage of vacancy decontrol. So there's a number of, of provisions to prevent that, right-of-return relocation payments, LS Act eviction restrictions on re-rentals, um, that we would just encourage you all to look in. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Allison, who's next?
Uh, Laura Kaiser will be the next speaker.
Um, hi, I'm Laura Kaiser. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you this evening. Um, I really appreciated Dan's presentation tonight and, um, the work that he's put into that and his team. Uh, and I understand that we need to consider all the stakeholders and of course, the costs and benefits, um, in order to determine an appropriate rate for rent stabilization. Um, but one point that was not on those slides and that, um, I think has come up with some other speakers this evening is the, the simple tenant that housing is a human right. We have the right to safe and affordable housing, and in Larkspur, this right is being challenged, um, as it is across the country and across Marin County as well. Um, really because of large venture-backed real estate companies that are purchasing residences and increasing rents to the maximum, as you've heard, and, and ultimately displacing residents. Uh, if I were to move today, my apartment would be listed for over a thousand dollars more per month than what I pay now. And this is after I sustained a 10% rent increase just last month. Uh, the property management company here at Skylark has confirmed that they will continue to exercise their right to inflict the maximum annual increase until, um, until this, uh, uh, goal is achieved. So I'm really, um, uh, asking and pleading with you all to support the rights of your constituents and not the rights of a large corporation that brings in millions of dollars per year in revenue and who's, frankly, their primary concern is their bottom line. Um, and not the residents here, um, of the city. So I really encourage you to take action and, um, uh, swiftly enact, uh, rent stabilization. I believe you know that it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, how many more are in the queue?
There are no further hands raised.
Okay, we're gonna close public comment. Bring it back to the city council. You'll be the last speaker, please come to the microphone. You like being last, huh?
Opportunity before I come.
I, I noticed that.
Thank you, Mayor Hillmore, I appreciate it. I will, um, I have to preface that tonight is an emotional night for us. I have a couple of my neighbors that could not be here because they felt threatened. Um, one of them left from the back and she felt, some things have happened this weekend, she felt threatened, so. I think, um, Julie said this online and I will echo her that it is, it's, it's, it's a pretty emotional thing for us. So bear with me as I collect myself. You guys know I'm usually pretty collected on most nights, so. Um, I, I, I'll take a quick breather, so. My name is Jockey and I'm with the Skylark Tenants Association. And I just want to thank the council member and council, council members and the ad hoc committee for continuing to treat this issue with urgency. Um, I'll start with an issue that we can all agree on. Um, and I think is that one of the last, um, my, you know, one of my neighbors just said this, is that housing is a necessity. And, um, we, we all agree that, to that, and, um, we're seeing that this is under threat in Larkspur just due to the high, uh, rents. And as you're aware, we have been canvassing our community, uh, with a petition urging, uh, elected officials to pass rent control in Larkspur, and you're our elected officials. And so far, like Kurt was saying, there's about 300, um, um, signatures in Larkspur itself. And 218 of those are renters. The rest of them are homeowners and, and, uh, also landlords. And as we meet on, as we, as we met our neighbors, we realized that sadly, our situation at Skylark was not unique. Renters all over Larkspur are receiving absurdly high rent increases, as you've heard, both from recent public comment and tonight's comments online. And most of which have been capped at the highest allowable by AB 1482, which is 10%. And that's what the California Apartments Association was, was saying, that it's very effective. Most of the renters we spoke to were rent burdened and were seriously considering moving out of Larkspur as they couldn't absorb another rent increase. And just to refresh our memory, about half of Larkspur residents are renters, so about 6,000 of us are renters. And only about 1,200 of those units live in large complexes. So that's, that's what, um, city manager was talking about, is that they realize that a lot of, um, a percentage of that 6,000 of us, they actually live in really small, small units, not the large complexes. And about half of all renters are rent burdened, and just to review that, is that this means that they pay more than 30% of their income on rent. May I get a little bit more than that, because I'm speaking for the association? Because I'm speaking for the association, I think we get five minutes. Is that okay if I just ask for that time? I'm gonna finish up very quickly. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate it very much. So i- in conclusion, our conclusion was this, that Larkspur renters desperately need basic protections against skyrocketing rents and arbitrary evictions. All renters deserve protections. All renters deserve housing security, it, security, and it doesn't matter whether their landlord is, what their landlord is and what size their complex is, or whether they happen to live at Skylark, or Woodlock, at Serenity, or smaller mom and pop, uh, complexes. This is why we need to create a rent control that is a universal prot, a universal policy that protects everyone. And what we're, what we're asking for, as you've heard from a lot of my other neighbors, is that, um, that you explore as a city council 60% of CPI and 5%, whichever one is lower. And this, like Kurt was saying, this is a hybrid standard that limits annual rent increases to a percentage of CPI while providing fixed upper income limits. And this is a fair, uh, it's a fair rationale that has been used across the, the state and across the, the different cities. And it does two things which I wanted to address that a lot of the landlords were talking about today. It provides stability for the tenants, but it also provides additional income for landlords to cover their costs because they have, they're able to actually come back to the rent board and actually petition if they have excessive, um, increase, excessive, uh, costs that come to them. So, again, um, in addition to the, the, the rent caps, we also know that in tandem, for it to work, we need just cause eviction protections. And these will be, will go to protect tenants from, uh, getting, you know, evicted through no, no cause of their own. And finally, I just want to say in closing, um, that I'd like to urge that the city council, as you're considering this moving forward, is to direct, um, and to direct staff to advance a rent stabilization ordinance that will, one, meet the goal of truly protecting lax per renters, and two, protect real housing security for half of lax per population. Because even though we do not own the properties and we do not, we're not a big corporation, we still are residents of this city and we deserve a right to be here and to have protection and to have an assurance that we can continue to live here. Thank you.
We're gonna close public comment now and bring this back to the city council for any further discussion. Uh, Gabe, would the ad hoc committee like to lead?
Sure, um. Yeah, I, uh, I'm definitely, I'm still absorbing everything that was said. Um. Yeah, I, I, um, first I want to thank, you know, all of you who came. I, I've said this over and over. Uh, you know, there, this is not only passionate, isn't the right word, it's a very emotional and it's a issue of security. And I mean, our first speaker, Robert, and our last speaker, and Jockey, you know, coincidentally kind of bring it home that if you're gonna lose your home, you know, it's, it feels like an existential threat. So I want to acknowledge the, you know, the level of anxiety and stress around this. Um, what, I, I want to keep it brief, so I, I really wanted to have the other council members talk, and I think, you know, you've heard, I don't want to repeat what's been said, but I'll, I'll just try to make three points. Um, one is, I think one of the, uh, you know, one of the speakers, um, uh, sent a really great article, and this is public comment from September 21st. And I, I have a big stack here. I've been spending hours and hours trying to understand this issue. And, and the title is "The False Narratives Around Rent Control." And, you know, the more I dig into this, I see there's the false narratives of rent control, and there's the false narratives of ownership. Uh, you know, as I sit here, as much as I think it's a stressful and, and emotional issue, I, I think we have to stay centered on the facts. And I've been trying to do that really hard, like, this is not a special interest. You know, are we gonna be more on one side of the, we really need to think about the community as a whole. And, and that, that's what's taking time, and I appreciate your patience, and anyone who thought we're gonna have an ordinance tonight. I, I think that would be, that would be unwise. Um, so I, I think the false narrative thing kind of led me to, you know, stepping away from the data for a minute and looking at, at one concept from three points of view, and that's fairness. What's fair? And I, I think to myself first, what's fair for the tenants, like Jockey and Robert who spoke, you know, fairness means a certain, uh, ability to have housing security. Uh, and that's primarily measured by the increases in rent and the rent burdening and affordability. So, so that's one parameter. I think there's another fairness which has not been discussed at all tonight, and that's the fairness of availability. And not only have rents gone up, but vacancy has gone down. I think it used to be historically 4%, it's about two and a quarter. So what that means is if my kids want to live here, or you have friends who want to move in, there's no way to get in. And I lived in Berkeley for 15 years. I was a student there, I had $300 a month rent, and then I managed property there. And one thing I remember is the wait lists. You know, when you have rent control, it protects the incumbents, but then nobody else can get in. Is that fair? And then there's the fairness to, to the ownership. And I think it's significant, like, uh, to, to look at, you know, some of the different, uh, I mean, one, one thing is, is, uh, um, you know, looking at some of the costs. So I, I think one of the false narratives about owners is that it's a bunch of, you know, people like, like, um, uh, I'm trying, I'm invitation homes or Black Rock or whatever coming into the community. We mostly have small landlords and we've met with them. And I think a lot of them are dealing with the fact that all the fires that you're seeing on TV are increasing insurance costs and, and property taxes have gone up, and there's a lot of inflationary costs. There's a SB 721 we talked about to replace a balcony or any can of Leeward surfaces, $250,000. So I think we really need to hear that side. And, you know, I struggle a little bit with two-thirds of CPI because when I look up CPI for the last 40 years, from 1982 to 2020, it's been 2.2, 2.67%. So two-thirds of that means we can raise rent 1.8% a year. And I don't know if that matches cap rates, GRMs, if that allows for, you know, SB 721. So what's fair to ownership? And I think the PELs were a unique family. They essentially subsidized, you know, a, a way of life. And, you know, do, how do we continue that? So I don't come with these opinions, you know, trying to push any one of them. I just want to see that whatever we do here in this room and beyond is that we look for consensus and that we look for compromise. There are definitely the sides that people need housing security. There's the sides that we need to make sure this is a community that has supply and people can move in here, not just protect who's here now. And then we need to be fair to the ownership, the investors. And, um, you know, with that, I, I hope we get more data. So I'm gonna work closer with the city manager. I've spent lots of hours. I have talked to the, you know, head of the Berkeley Rent Board. I've reached out to the California Apartment Association. I'm talking to as many renters as I can. I'm gonna, you know, I've, I've talked to some DSA people, so I, I just really want to hear all of your opinions. And I want this to be a public process. And so the next meetings, the, uh, ownership or landlord forum, I think is very important to look at that third aspect. You know, let's really hear them and not just make them the boogeyman. And then I think the meeting between the prime ownership and the prime tenants is very important to me. And I understand if, if, you know, uh, certain representatives don't want issues on the table, that's their prerogative. But I really think we need to approach this with the intention of consensus and compromise, and that's what I'm gonna push for. Thank you.
Councilmember Wayne? You're right, the ad hoc committee. Councilmember Hera?
Thank you. Um, first I want to, um, say thanks to everybody who showed up here tonight and who has showed up at our prior meetings and helped inform this discussion in a positive way. Um, I appreciate that very much. I also appreciate the opportunity to work with our vice mayor on the ad hoc committee. We've had, um, I don't know how many meetings we've had at this point. We've had plenty. We've had lots of individual discussions. Um, and I appreciate, uh, the vice mayor's, uh, leadership in moving those forward, those discussions forward. Um, and I want to thank our city manager for, um, the hard work kind of behind the scenes, really. Although it became a little evident tonight, I think, about the, the, the work that, that he's been doing and that our staff has been doing. Um, I appreciate that all, all very much. It informs my thinking about this immensely. Um, I do have a couple of things I want to say, um, but I do want to start out, uh, as a merc, as, as a matter of personal prerogative. Uh, I, I'm an attorney myself. Um, and so I tend to come at these issues from the perspective of being an attorney. And I wanted to reflect on the comments of the, uh, the speaker who represented himself as litigation counsel for, uh, Prime tonight. Uh, and then proceeded to identify potential causes of action uh, that Prime may wish to assert in litigation, even though that individual, uh, stated several times that that was not a threat. Sounded like a threat. Um, and I thought that was unhelpful. Um, I think the, um, you don't need to do that. Um, I, I think, and just to kind of echo what Gabe said, this does, this discussion has to conclude with a sense of the need to make, uh, concessions and compromise on behalf of all parties. And then after doing that, to achieve a consensus within our community, all stakeholders. If we don't have that, and we don't have a reasonable expectation of getting that, then we're wasting our time. Um, so I'm looking for a commitment on behalf of all parties in this conversation to pursue those goals. Consensus um, and concessions. Uh, I think it's important for us to reach a fair and equitable rate cap. Um, I'm not sure, I know exactly what the number is. I have an idea in my own mind that it's somewhere in the range of 4% to 5%. I'm not a fan of the CPI-based strategy. Uh, I think we can pick a number. Um, but those are my views, and I just don't think we're, I don't think we have the information yet quite to know where that number might come out to be. But that's the direction I would, we would see, see us go. We do need to address the impact, the, 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 the consequences of rate increases year to year. And I think we need to have something, um, in whatever it is that we come up with, if we do come up with an ordinance, um, that addresses that in a meaningful way. that addresses that in a meaningful way. Because it's one thing to say your rent's gonna go up X amount in a particular year, but if it goes up X amount every year forever and ever and ever, people will leave. And we don't want that. At least I don't. And then finally, I do think it's very important, and I think our city manager stressed this. We do need to have a an equitable mechanism, administrative mechanism for resolving concerns, particularly within the landlord community on individual basis, where costs are going up in ways that are unpredicted, they can't recover reasonable rate of return. We need to have a mechanism that's that's straightforward, simple and efficient to address those concerns in an appropriate way. And that's something that I would really encourage us to think about when we're thinking about what we're gonna come up with. So I've kind of said enough, I guess. Just to kind of summarize, I'd like to go back to the to the questions for consideration that our city manager asked us to address, I think, tonight. And just offer my own preliminary perspectives on the answers to those questions. The first question is, does the council council want to consider consider a rent regulation ordinance? And I don't want to speak for the council because I can't. I can't speak for myself. And the answer to that question is yes. If yes, is there consensus on the council about what the rent increase ceiling should be? I don't think we have the data to do that yet. I just expressed my own personal views about the direction we should go on that. But I think we're still needing to do some work on it. If yes, does the council prefer a program with staff-administered code enforcement and regulation or one that focuses on conflict resolution through mediation and arbitration? The former. I think it should be a regulatory process, not something that's just subject to mediation or arbitration. I just, I think that just is not gonna work. And then finally, does the council want to consider eviction protections beyond those in the Tenant Protection Act? I take seriously the comments that I've heard that eviction protection has to go hand in hand with rent stabilization. So the answer, my answer to that question is yes. That's it.
Thank you.
I think.
Councilmember Way.
I think I'll not make this lengthy because I think we have a lot more material we need to talk about. I appreciate your comments about fairness because I think fairness is really ultimately what a public policy decision this is going to have to be and all the stakeholders. I have a lot of unanswered questions still, so. I think that cost of the potential litigation cost is something that we can't ignore and we need to learn more about what Mr. Kibler's statement and letter, which is now in the public comment section, could mean as far as our obligation financially to the rest of the citizens and residents and tenants of Larkspur, not just one particular building ownership. I don't fully understand what the cost of enforcement for any type of rent stabilization would be in our small jurisdiction. We've heard that there are nonprofits that work on this, but the cost of enforcement is very difficult in many circumstances for jurisdictions of our size. And I need to understand more of what that's gonna mean for our city staff. I think the comment about property tax reduction is something very relevant and we don't really know what that means at this point. I think we have one comment from our 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 city, our county assessor. And some of the public comments were about getting assessment information from other counties, which may be relevant, but we do really work within our own county. And the assessor here has a lot of authority over evaluation of properties and we don't know how that's gonna play out. I don't know how a rent board would work here. There's some talk about mediation. I don't know how that would work within our small jurisdiction. I think that's an important thing because why enact a policy if you don't have any authority to enforce it? So that still needs to be answered. And then lastly, that one of our callers commented about countywide efforts that are being made. And I'm really interested in finding out what is more being done on the countywide level. He recommended that there was some countywide discussion that was happening with a petition, et cetera. And that may that may be enlightening to us as to where another policy direction can go. So I'm at that level. I think consensus and concessions is definitely a term. We have a lot of work still to do to hear from our our property owners. Many of them, we don't even have, we haven't even identified yet. And they're more than just one property owner, the Skylark Property Prime Association now. There are a lot of smaller property owners who have twelve sixteen, two units who actually reside in Larkspur or reside in Marin. And we need to honor that they are part of our community too and engage with them. So I'd like to see us still answer some of these questions before we come up with a direction.
Thank you very much. And thanks to everybody that attended the meeting this evening and participated in the workshop. There was a lot of helpful information and many thoughtful comments. We appreciate that this is a very important issue and one that's going to be an important issue and get more important important as time goes by. I also want to remind everybody that Larkspur is one of thirteen municipalities in Marin. There's a lot of common ground between many of us and we currently share services when we share common challenges. So I don't see this as different than any other big problem we're trying to face. So we'll probably end up trying to work together on whatever it is we try to do and that's going to take some time. So with that, if there is no further council discussion, we covered some ground tonight. Thank you very much to Dan Schwartz, city manager and staff, and Shannon O'Hare for putting together the presentation and the work on this tonight. Thanks to Sky, our city attorney, for being our fearless leader this evening. Thanks to all. Well, thank and thanks for all the members of the public. It was a lengthy meeting tonight and thanks for taking your time to come here and be with us. Appreciate it. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn to our regular meeting of October the nineteenth.
So moved.
We are, we are adjourned.